All right. All right, with that, I will call this evening's zoning board of appeals meeting to order. We have only one item on the agenda this evening. That's the opening of the public hearing for Stowe Acres North Course comprehensive permit. Before we begin, I'll entertain a motion to.
I move away the reading of public notice.
Our second amendment.
Motion made with a second discussion, hearing done, all in favor. Thank you, all right, and motion passes, thank you. Before we begin, actually, just for the applicant's benefit and also actually for members of the public as well, I think it might be worth just quick introductions. We'll start with full board members and associate members and staff, so when I start again.
Andy Crappe.
I'm Andy Demore.
Larry Dogg.
Dick Hartnagle.
And Ruth.
Ruth Kennedy Sada with a cold on Zoom, sorry.
There we go. Well, we hope you feel better. We've got two somewhat ill members, but we're going through. Our associate members.
Mike Naylor.
Ryan McFarlane.
And our staff.
Michael Sligl.
I'm Valerie Rorty.
Excellent. So just wanted to begin just to. Oh, I'm sorry, and our consultant, I'm so sorry, yes.
Sure, I'm Ezra Glenn, I'm a consultant of Mass Harley Partnership.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Before we dive in, one thing that we need to, just one administrative matter is about access to tonight's and frankly, future meetings with respect to this public hearing. It's the classic question of we post it onto the website as opposed to just having a recording sort of kept. I will open it up for a very, very quick discussion, though I would note the somewhat unique nature of this application and the likely interests by members of the public. That took my hand.
Post it.
I'm trying to think of a video.
Okay, all right, in that case, for everyone's identification, all of our meetings are recorded and are available upon request, however, based on the unique nature of this particular application and certainly the public interest, it will be posted on the town's website. Is there a particular site?
Maybe ZVA.
Stowe TV will have it, and I'll have a link to it on the zoning board of appeals webpage and the Stowe Acres Info webpage, so multiple places.
And we'll do that for each one of the next meetings from this particular public hearing. So just to kick things off, just to provide a brief overview of where we're at before we turn things over to the applicant. So as a reminder for, or as hearing for the first time for members of the public, so comprehensive permits are a standard permitting tool enabled by Mass General Laws Chapter 40B, sections 20 to 23. If you're interested, of course, you're welcome to read the statute. However, you can also take a look at the town's rules and regulations and separate policy with respect to comprehensive permit applications. And actually, to quote from it, "The purpose of the rules is to facilitate the development of affordable housing in Stowe and to govern the procedures to be followed in connection with the filing and consideration by the board of an application for a comprehensive permit." Now, under Chapter 40B, the zoning board of appeals is the board that has the authority to issue the particular permit. And what's unique is that it is somewhat defined as an all encompassing permit, because a comprehensive permit by its very term actually replaces other permits that one, a particular resident would normally go through, such as the planning board, Board of Health, Conservation Commission. Also, by way of background, so under Chapter 40B, the board has the authority to grant all of the approvals that would otherwise trigger separate applications under the local bylaws and ordinances. The board also has the authority to grant waivers of local requirements if requested by the applicant and necessary to construct the proposed project. The board's mechanism for taking these actions is, as I've mentioned, a single comprehensive or all encompassing permit, the purpose of which, again, to expedite the approval process and facilitate the construction of low or moderate income housing. The board has already begun the process as it is required to, to also see comments, however, from other boards and commissions. We've received some of those comments already, we'll refer to that, but the expectation is that that will be a process that will be continued throughout a number of meetings. And obviously, for any members here from those other town boards or commissions or who are online, they are obviously encouraged to continue to submit comments whilst the process continues. There are essentially two components of a comprehensive permit, it's a negotiation of sorts. One is obviously the waiver of local requirements. Note, however, that state requirements, however, cannot be waived, whether it be, for example, Title V or wetlands protections. And if a municipality has stricter requirements to state law, then we can only waive the stricter requirements. For example, in Stowe, we have stricter wetland protection regulations than the state does. With respect to the waivers that are being sought, we essentially will be faced with one of three choices. We can either approve the application as it is provided as is, we can approve with conditions, or we can ultimately deny it. And again, the board will use correspondence and comments in part from other boards and commissions to help in making those particular decisions. The other piece of a comprehensive permit, as I've sort of referenced before, is the affordable housing piece to it, because in exchange for the waivers, the developer must also provide some affordable housing units. Twenty to twenty-five percent of all units in the development must be deeded as affordable. And the affordable units need to be able to blend into the development and are not otherwise distinguishable. So in layman's terms, if you drive down the street, you shouldn't be able to tell which ones are affordable and which ones are not. Generally, why are comprehensive permits needed? One, as I've now repeatedly talked about affordable housing, the state, the Commonwealth, excuse me, does require all towns and cities to have at least ten percent of all housing units that are deeded affordable. Stowe is currently around seven percent. And if a town or a city fails to reach that ten percent of affordable units, comprehensive permits can obviously be used to reach that particular goal. Now, there is a state-defined timeline for handling comprehensive permits. The public hearing obviously is opening today, and it will continue, and I'll address that later on, as we go into the later months. And later on, closer towards the end of the agenda, we'll talk a little bit about what that schedule would look like and what you might be able to talk about at various meetings. As of today, based on the current statutory schedule, the public hearing would close on July 24th, and a decision would have to be due by September 2nd. That being said, there is a mild disclaimer with that, because you can extend that time period upon mutual agreement between the applicant and the zoning board. But at least as of today, those would be the expected dates for courtship and decision. Now, just a real brief background about sort of how we got here with this particular process. The Stowe Acres Plan process began back in 2019. As many of you know, there's been a substantial amount of collaboration between the town, the owners of Stowe Acres, MCO and Associates, and the Stowe Conservation Trust. Overall, the project consists of three components. I just want to go through that, because I think it's going to help also reset people as to specifically what's the topic that we're discussing today and in future meetings, and what might be related to it, but not technically subject to the hearing. So the first is the South Course. There's a conservation restriction throughout the South Course. This further, this limits further development of the site. It was purchased with community preservation funds. The restriction is held by the Conservation Commission and the Stowe Conservation Trust. There's also public trail easement around the perimeter of the site. The use as a golf course does remain. And there is, just as a piece of that, there is an application with respect to the driving range at that particular location. That is a application that is currently pending and is already being discussed by the ZVA. I would ask everyone, members of the public, members of the board, to not discuss that, because that is the topic of a separate public hearing. If anyone's interested in that, I would encourage you to attend our next hearing, at which point we will attend our next meeting, at which point we will continue the public hearing with respect to that particular item. There's also the North Course Climate Resiliency Master Plan. Two-thirds of the North Course, as some of you might remember, was purchased by the town to facilitate recreation. If you are interested in that, there's more information on the town's website. I think there's an open house about that coming up, so.
That'd be right, well.
There you go. And then there's the North Course Development Plan. That's the topic of what we'll be discussing tonight, as well as in successive meetings. And I want to again emphasize that tonight is just the beginning of a series of meetings to discuss this permit. To be very clear, nothing will be decided tonight, except for certain administrative matters that we'll need to discuss at the end of the, at the end of the meeting. We'll discuss later a schedule for future meetings, when those will take place, and ideally, what topics will be taking place as a, as a quick preview. It is beneficial, at least in my opinion, that we break the application into somewhat pieces for discussion. We think that is both easier for the applicant to focus on these things, easier for the board to focus its attention, and frankly, easier for members of the public as well, so that we can address those questions or comments that you have. And to be perfectly frank, in terms of scheduling, if you're really interested in traffic, you know what meeting that is going to be, if you don't care about traffic, then you can skip that meeting, and that'll make it easier for you all. As a result, we will open this, this particular meeting to limited public comment and questions. We'll have a limited amount of time for that, but I just want to emphasize, and I want to repeat this again, if we do not get to you, or you think of something later, that's okay. There are going to be a lot of meetings afterwards, where you'll be able to provide your particular questions and comments, and you are always welcome to submit them via email or in writing. Frankly, that actually might be more beneficial for the board members, because we'll be able to review those ahead of time. So again, this is really meant to be looking at this project on a macro level, a preliminary level in terms of questions and comments, with much, much opportunity later on to focus on detail. Going a little bit deeper into questions and comments, so during the hearing, board members, both full bill board members and associate members, may ask questions or state positions about particular issues being discussed. To be clear, these questions and particular positions are not necessarily the positions of other board members, and they are not binding on the board and should not be taken as any sort of particular direction for the applicant. Only the notice and decision that's ultimately voted on by the entire board after the public hearing is closed will be the position of the board. Correspondence will always be reviewed, and we will summarize what has been reviewed. I also make note that, at least as a personal practice, a lot of times, I may not refer to a particular question during a hearing, but I might actually use that question to ask for my own thing. So that's why we definitely encourage members to participate. We will also, after we ask some questions and comments, we will encourage town staff, as well as representatives of other boards and committees, to also ask any questions or comments. Again, this is not just for tonight, but for future hearings. One, just quick reminder for anyone who's here from another board or committee, if you are speaking on behalf of that board and committee, that would be your opportunity to do so. If you are speaking simply on behalf of yourself as an individual, I would ask you to please wait for the broader public portion of the comments and questions. And then. Oh, and if you do, and for members of the public, if you do provide any questions or comments, just as a quick reminder, and we'll remind you later on as well, please state your name and your address, just that we can maintain that information in the record. Any questions or comments should be, to the extent possible, kept short, concise, direct, if possible. One thing to note, though, is questions and comments from members of the public are to be directed to the board, not necessarily the applicant. The applicant is not required to actually respond, however, they are encouraged to do so. And I will say from experience, a lot of times, if it's a worthwhile question, the board is certainly the ones that ultimately take that question and ask it of the applicant. So. Are we good?
Open meeting law.
Okay.
We're bound by the open meeting law, so we cannot discuss it outside this meeting. There's always got to be a public hearing. If you have a question to us, we can answer it.
Right, that's why, to the extent that you see us around town, feel free to say hi. But, but please do not ask or ignore us, it's okay. But, you know, please don't say, hey, by the way, you know, that was an interesting thing that happened at the last hearing. Even if it's an offhand casual comment, it's better for everybody to withhold those. The best way to hear something and, you know, you're thinking to yourself, oh, the meeting's not for another, you know, the next meeting's not for another couple of weeks, I might forget that. Please email the staff, and they will distribute any questions or comments to the board. They will distribute to the applicant, and we will then use that and discuss it later on. So frankly, it's almost, you know, a good way to jump the lines sometimes, to make sure you get your comments and questions in. So with that, I will now pass it over to the applicant to write us with at least an initial presentation.
Perfect. I'm not quite sure what's going to be the best way. We've got a presentation, kind of a PowerPoint, and I don't want to have my back to you guys and my back to them. So at some point, I'm going to have my back to everybody. I've got this map up, get it over reference, we can point to different sections. But I can start over here with just kind of a general overview. My name is Mark O'Hagan, I'm the owner of MCO Associates. Virtually ninety percent of the work that I've done over the last thirty-five years has been focused on affordable housing. A couple of projects I've been involved with in Stowe, Stoke Farms, I think it was about a hundred years ago, or are you talking about? Was a 40B, I think there's twenty-five homes there. I was also involved with the villages in Stowe, a good-sized project right on one side. That was developed, I think it was finished being built probably about ten years ago. I think it was about twenty years ago, holding the comprehensive permit here. So I've had the benefit of being some of the people here in previous meetings and on the board. I live in Bolton, so I do consider myself local, understand the nature of these towns. I've done work in Stowe, and Bolton, and Foxborough, and Carver, and Lancaster. So this is where I've done a good amount of work. You can go on my website, you can see some of the work that I have done. One of the most recent projects I completed that's close is in Bolton on Sugar Road, right across from West Conale Candies. There's thirty units there, those are detached condominiums, a little bit different than this. But really, over the last ten years, much of my work has been focused on denser properties, but really focusing on detached homes, cottages, tighter environments as compared to townhomes and other things. So smaller, single-family homes, smaller as in quotes, because today, all the homes are so damn big. But, so I've generally been building in, you know, roughly two thousand square feet, twenty-two hundred square feet, so relatively modest by today's standards. This site, as the chairman had mentioned, we've been working with the town for, you know, three plus years now with the Housing Trust, really interesting process and really beneficial process from our end. I won't go through all that, because he did provide a nice overview. But it's really, it's been great working with the town thus far to get to this point, and we're looking forward to continuing forward. So as the chairman had mentioned, there are the three components of the overall development. What we're focusing on is part of the North Course. We've got sixty-nine acres that we are acquiring, that is roughly this line here, that loops around and goes up to the river. There's about a hundred and ten acres that, that the town owns adjacent to it, that will remain as golf for a period of time, and then transition to conservation and recreation. The plan that we have here is essentially the same plan that was presented to the town two years ago, in conjunction with information that was being submitted about the acquisition of the North Course land. Pretty much, I think we had the conceptual plans in conjunction with the South Course Conservation restrictions as well. So felt it was important, we set numbers to stick with them. Obviously, we've all been dealing with things changing and things getting more expensive over the last couple of years. So at the end of the day, I think the project, the homes will be more expensive. But the scope and scale of the project really hasn't changed. We've just spent a significant amount of time going through. There's a lot of engineering work that will be reviewed as we go through it. I, I think that the approach that town's taking of having certain meetings focused on certain issues, as he said, will be beneficial for everybody. My intent tonight is to really go through a general overview of the site. I'll touch on everything but relatively briefly, and then can answer questions, and then we can delve into the things that we make forward. So if you want to vote, if you can vote for the next slide, please. Okay, and we've got a screen in the middle of it. For the housing, we've got three main components of what we're building. As we said, there's a total of a hundred and eighty-nine units. The first one that we're talking about, this is the rental cottage. These are individual cottages that will be for rent at the back of the property. It's about a six-acre piece of this home style that we'll go through here in a few minutes and will show you. We've got parking, parking for everybody, some pocket parks, access to the trail system and such. The second component is what we're calling, we have focused here, is the multi-family housing. This is a twenty-five-unit building that will be targeted to people that are sixty-two years and older. It'll be rentals, so it'll be modest rentals, one-bedroom apartments. The affordable units in this will be at fifty percent of the meeting, so the rents will be, will be lower than the rents in the back. They'll have some community space in there, that could be a nice, nice usage for that, for that piece, for that population. And then the third component, which is really, you know, from here all the way around, there's a hundred and twenty-four single-family homes. Those homes are really the economic driver for the project. Those will be fee simple lots, they're denser lots. The lots actually range really from about, you know, thirty-five hundred to eight or nine thousand square feet. We've got a couple of different styles, some that we're calling the interior, some on the exterior, some kind of village housing, that we'll show you some samples of that are different. Those will have thirty-one units that will be for sale, affordable. Based on today's pricing, or a three-bedroom home would be roughly two sixty-eight. So that can change a little bit with interest rates and things of that nature. But as of today, that's pretty much what the target price would be. I didn't mention the rents, the, the value of the rents for the sixty-two plus, the affordable units would be about thirteen ninety-five, based on today's numbers, which is very affordable. The cottages, those two and three bedrooms, those would start at about twenty-two, twenty-three hundred dollars under today's income information. So we can push it to the next one, please. So this slide, it came out a little bit darker, but the intention is this property will ultimately, it will be subdivided. Whereas the cottages, as we're seeing here, will be one parcel. Single-family homes, the brown will be a second. The multi-family will be another parcel, and then the darker green is really the open space. The acreage, as I'm not sure if I mentioned, but we're looking at about, it's about twenty-nine acres in the brown, which is the single-family home. It's about an acre for the sixty-two plus, and about six acres for the rental cottages in the back. So the green space that, that surrounds it is just under half the property. So we got about thirty, you know, thirty-three acres, thirty-four acres. So roughly fifty percent open, fifty percent more heavily, more heavily developed. We took care to maintain a reasonable buffer along here, from the residence along Cross Street, from the back of these houses to their rear property line. The closest is about a hundred and twenty-five feet, so there's a reasonable amount of separation. You're, you're, you're probably closer to two fifty or three hundred feet to the actual homes. It varies a little bit, you can see how the road changes, but the closest is one twenty-five. Many of the other ones to the property line is almost two hundred feet. So we really tried to maintain a pretty sizable distance between the two of them. And so ultimately, part of the reason that we, you know, that things will be subdivided, part of the reason why there's, we need to, in a sense, do, do three comprehensive permits is because of the, the nature of the affordability of the projects. They're all administered differently. And they all need to be tracked and monitored from a financial perspective. So each project really ends up being its, its own little entity, and it will have specific requirements for who can live there, the process that they need to go through. So that's really what drives the three different permits. Specifically, the homes that are for sale, it's a deed rider, it gets attached to the home, it stays there forever. People need to meet certain standards, they need to be in a mortgage, we'll have a lottery for those homes. The sixty-two plus have different requirements, since there's no children allowed there, which is, is part of the program, that you can't restrict children unless it's sixty-two plus. And, and just given that it's, it's an attached structure with a separate entity, with a separate population, that needs to be done on its, on an individual basis. And then the rental cottages, there's no restrictions on who can be there in terms of ages. Those are two and, you know, two and three-bedroom units that, that will go through. So the permit is really to, to, to break those up, so that those can be administered in the long term as it relates to affordability in conjunction with, I still call them DHD, but it's the Office of Housing and Living Communities. So I'll say DHD probably ninety percent of the time, but I'll put it out there, so. So that's why we, we have, we talk about comprehensive permit, comprehensive permits. Clearly, they're all related, we're all working with the same road structure and, and relationship for one another. But so it is as much of a, an administrative exercise as compared to a planning exercise. But obviously, in the rental cottages, it's one parcel, there's no lot lines in between it. In the, the single-family homes, there's a hundred and twenty-four individual fee simple lots that people will be acquiring. So there are some relationships that are different. So I, I think we'll work that through with the board and come up with the easiest processes we can to come up with the three of them. So I'll take a little more time now and focus on some of the different sections. If you can go to the next slide, please, let's go. This is the, the back end of the property, kind of a blow up from here. It was a nice kind of blown up one, there's a little more details that have been put up here. But these are the cottages. We've got three different home styles here, there's a mix of two and three bedrooms, the sizes. They range from twelve to fourteen hundred square feet. Really cool little concept. I am currently building these homes in Lancaster right now. So if people want to see it, we just got a model, want to rent one, I'd love it, a little further. I think I put the website on one of the screens coming up, and we'll show you the homes to get a sense of them. The intent is, you know, I'm a relatively small developer, I don't think, you know, I'm not, you know, someone that's going to compete with a two-hundred-and-fifty unit, you know, rental project. So I've always wanted to do some things that was more in scale fitting with these types of towns. And, you know, dropping a, you know, two-hundred units back here would be, would be overwhelming and just not fit the cycle. So, you know, this is kind of, you know, my version of rentals in these, these types of communities. They're on slabs, really cute little houses. Everybody's got a couple of parking spaces, some of them are in closer proximity to the homes as we have here. Some will have parking areas like conventional apartment communities, others, we got, you know, spaces along the edge. We got some pocket parks for people, you know, there'll be mail stations there. Obviously, all the services will be provided, landscaping, snowplowing, et cetera, as it is a rental community. If you can go to the next slide, I think I've got some imaging of the homes. Oh, I got some more information. Forty, forty units, three home styles, as I said, we've got a bungalow, a two-bedroom, and a three-bedroom, which I'll show you. Bungalows, really terrific little place, about eleven-hundred-and-fifty square feet. Two really comfortable bedrooms, all on one level. So for people that are handicapped, for people that are older, who don't want to deal with stairs, it's kind of age restricted by design, as compared to saying who can live there and who can't. But really neat, neat little, neat little house. And again, eleven fifty, twelve ninety-eight, and fourteen hundred are the sizes for the three of them. Everyone's got two, two cars, two spaces for parking in some of those back areas where we've got the larger parking areas. You know, we can look at actually doing some garages that we do in some other areas that aren't reflected on the plan. But you, you see them in some of the larger properties, some of these kind of separate phase for people that, you know, want or need a garage. We've got the central greens, central greens for open space to break things up. We've got a couple of connections off of there tying into the trail system, so people can literally leave from their house, go out. And these will be designed to be on slabs, so we just try to keep them as efficient as possible. Market rents for these are probably thirty-two fifty as a starting point. Seems like a lot of money to me, but that's just what it is these days. A, a two-bedroom apartment on one ninety-five now. A, a two-bedroom apartment on one ninety-five now, you know, in a, in a forty-unit building at a thousand, eleven hundred square feet, you're twenty-eight hundred to three thousand, thirty-two hundred in some properties now. Everything is very expensive, so um will be equally expensive, but a hell of a lot better, so. Affordable rents are uh, the, right now, the two bedrooms would be uh twenty-three, twenty-five. That will change as, as we move forward, that's based on the area incomes. For reference, for the affordable housing, and this will be, I mean, for, for the, the, the single-family homes and the rental cottages, those will be uh distributed to people with a maximum income of, of eighty percent of the median income. To put that in perspective, if people see these rents, they're like, oh my god, that seems high for affordable units. For a family of four, the maximum income, it's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars that you can earn and qualify for these homes. That's for the family of four, two-bedroom apartment, if you've got three people, I think it's like one oh eight, so it drops down about ten thousand per people, so. It, the, the rents seem high as an affordable perspective, and they seem high to me, that's the basis of how they're designed. But when you take them and you look at them in perspective of what the income's allowed, it, they, you know, they, they are reasonable and appropriate. As I said, my shameless plug, I'm building them in Lancaster, for people that are interested, you can go on the website, which is MCO Cottage Rentals, we just furnished a model out there, we're just starting to release them. But if you wanna see them, certainly feel free to go up and take a look. And then I've just got some images of the cottages that we can go through quickly. This is the bungalow, if you go, I got the floor plan next. I'll have, you know, front porches, uh really comfortable bedrooms, big, open, I mean, the open, the living space in this home is, it's as big as what you have in a, a twenty-four hundred square foot home these days. Really nice size, open kitchen, island dining area, living area, the two bedrooms, it's two baths in this unit as well. Quartz countertop, stainless steel appliances, laminate hardwood floors, really beautiful units, so. Next. Is the two-bedroom. Again, front porch, really kind of colonial farmhouse details. And just a, you know, just the charming streetscape appeal. You can go to the floor plans quickly, um this one, you've got kind of living in the front, uh kitchen dining in the back. Laundry is downstairs, half-bath, and then the next, next room is the, you know, two bedrooms upsized, both comfortable, good amount of storage, so again, that is uh, that's twelve ninety-eight, I think is the square footage. Now the next one, which is a three-bedroom. Right, yeah. A similar design, concept, they all look pretty consistent. What we did here, um kitchen, living, dining, open towards the front, we added a primary bedroom with a bathroom in the back. So again, you know, for families, parents can be downstairs, people that may have, you know, handicap issues, empty nesters, can have one level level and have it be comfortable. Upstairs, two additional bedrooms and um, you know, additional storage on the back, there's an extra room, so. All comfortable layouts, this is about, this is not about, this is fourteen hundred square feet. So again, larger than most rentals, obviously smaller than homes. But uh concept that I, I think will be really well received and you know, will kind of maintain the, the consistent look that we had for the property and, and fit well on the site. And then the next one, I think we're talking about the uh, we call the manor house, so the rental building, this is here. It's twenty-five units, we've got a, a good amount of parking around the building for the residents, um we have it kind of overlooking what will be the central green, so. We go to the next site, um the next slide, you get a, a sense of the building. Oh, no, I got more information, sorry. Twenty-five units, one bedroom, one bath, sixty-two and older, no children, common space, a lot of this I talked about. The units are more modest in size, they're six to seven hundred square feet, rents at fifty percent of the median, so quite a bit lower. The maximum income for those of, I think I, you know, based on two people being in the unit is sixty thousand, so it's really targeted for people with modest fixed income. Which is really, I mean, there's no market opportunities for, you know, uh that plantation, that kind of stuff, that's, you know, heavily subsidized. But for the most part, you really just don't see it. Market rents here will be from above two thousand, um so pretty affordable compared to what's out there today as well. Hope you can shift to the next one. So the design is really uh intended to be really the same thing, just a kind of bigger modern farmhouse, almost looking like a, you know, like a clubhouse on the, the backside of the green, really broad front porch, nice, you know, detailing with some battening gables and, um you know, metal roof on the porch to tie it in with things. So relatively simple, but um I think a nice kind of elegant design, simple, that will work with uh, with everything else that we're doing on the site. Go to the next one, um these, you're not gonna see much. But essentially, we've got a central lobby, common space in the back, we have, we have a, a kitchen, bath uh for people, a small office. And then the rooms uh on both sides, and then the second level. Again, similar designs, and we've got common space upstairs as well uh for people, whether it's on the second floor or, you know, the first floor could have activities and events, with, we've got storage, we've got a kitchen, we've got the bathroom. On top could be more dedicated to, to local residents. So uh again, these units are in the, the six to seven hundred square foot range, one bedroom, one bath, intended to be, you know, could be very nice, but modest in size to, to make the number suffer by others, suffer. Next, please, single-family homes, lots of notes. As we said, a hundred and twenty-four single-family homes. These will be on fee simple lots, they will be buying the dirt that they're on, even though the dirt is smaller. You know, some of these smaller village lots over here, these are, you know, uh thirty-five hundred to four thousand, I'm a little bit crazy with it, but generally, at thirty-five hundred to four thousand square feet, they're using a good amount of space. So that's the tightest section of what we have. The design overall is what people will call a traditional neighborhood development design, for people that are into designing stuff. So we will have fee simple lots, the, all of the ways will be uh public, I mean, not public, they'll be private, so those will be maintained by the association. So within the home, for the homeowners of the hundred and twenty-four unit, they will have a homeowners, let's say, association to kind of represent their interest in overall property, make decisions and things. Things that we incorporated from the design that um, uh you know, that, that I consider to be important to, to, to keep the look and feel of the property, all the homes will be focused for the front porch. All of the garaging with really one or two exceptions, with some couple of orphan lots have either side-loaded garages or many of them are rear-loaded garages, many of them are detached garages, as you can see back here, so these alley design is, you know, these garages are servicing these homes. So as you're driving down the street, you're seeing charming homes. It'll be up a little more closer to the street, they'll have broad sidewalks, lots of street trees and, and landscaping. You know, be a very walkable community, hopefully people will be out um on the front porches enjoying it. Critical component to the overall design from my perspective, just to, you know, to, to bring it down to scale and make it a very livable community, so. We have uh really designed, I didn't put them on here and I would can, I, I can bring them on in another day, but I knew there was a lot to cover, but we've done different, um you know, different kind of, it's not scenarios, but you know, showing the homes and the garage and, you know, play areas for kids or a hot tub or whatever it wants to be. But really, the intent is that people, they don't have a lot of space, but we've really tried to make it all reasonable space. You know, most lots in Stowe, in Bolton, it's an acre and a half or two acres that none of us really need, we have, um but you know, we get a bunch of privacy, but the amount of area that you physically use in and around your home is, is probably not much larger than what we're gonna have here. So certainly gonna be denser than, than what you see, but really will be um detail-oriented homes, uh nice finishes, extensive landscaping, um to tie everything together and make it nice. We have, you know, uh kind of parks and green space designated. This area we've got um through the center is part of our drainage design, so these are basins that will be used for drainage, but they're sized and shaped such that they can be grass and landscaping, we have uh walkways and pathways that go along next to it. So it not, it's not gonna be this ugly detention basin that you see stuck out and, you know, off the side of the property. This will be a landscaped part of the design to really make use of everything the best we can. The uh home size is generally be two thousand square feet. Like I had twenty-seven in the application, on the end, it could be, I mean, so two thousand to three thousand on the outside is generally, you know, with the larger lots you might have, so again, um most new homes that are being built are probably three thousand and up, so we'll kind of be below that, we'll probably top out where a a tr- traditional neighborhood starts and stuff. Uh as I said, uh that many of the homes too, all of the designs that we have, and I'll, we'll go through a, a sampling of them. We've got first-floor master units for all of them. Uh I think given the proximity to golf, just the nature of the community, that um, you know, there will be a sizable interest for you know, empty nesters per se, you know, they'll have services available to them, they'll have a great place, they can get a golf cart, go east and go west, do whatever they want. So for all of the home styles, whether it's on the, you know, the interior lots that are a little smaller, the exterior lots that are the larger, the village lots, they all have versions with master down and master ups to accommodate um everybody who might have an interest. Uh affordable sales, as I had said, three-bedroom prices roughly two sixty-eight, based on today. That will change, interest rates go back up, they'll go down, interest rates go down, they may go up, anything will change, but you know, that'll be based upon the timing. The market-sized homes now will probably be from about seven hundred and up. It's just what it costs to produce homes these days, so uh they are market homes, I'm right, I, my, my objective is, is to be high, as, as high as we can to make the project successful. But starting with the smaller size home, we're looking at uh, at a, at a starting point in that value, which again, it's, it's still, you know, pretty expensive, but by today's standard, for anything that, that's new out here, you're gonna see that this is comparable or uh, or even, even, even lower than most. So next, I've got kind of some representative samples of, of homes that we can click through relatively quickly, again, just the site plan, but we, we talked about it here. Uh I make kind of a distinction between the interior homes. I consider the interior homes in here, I think we've got fifty-three, yeah, fifty-three interior homes. And then there's a couple of different versions, when we say exterior homes, I'm looking at these broader lots that generally will have, you know, more privacy behind them, these, you know, with golf, golf, golf course views, et cetera. And then the village homes are kind of this section back here, so. If the intention is that as part of this plan, these are fee simple lots. It's essentially in conjunction with this process, we would be looking to establish zoning for these lots. So, you know, there's gonna be minimum offsets for, for different areas, so essentially within these lots, we'll have a building. We're working with people and they wanna make changes, we, we can work with them and we can do that. In the future, if people wanna make changes and they're within the building envelope and they apply up for permits and comply with things, they can do it, just like in any other subdivision in town, they can make changes underneath the rules for that neighborhood. This process will be, you know, an important part of it, will be working to establish the rules for this neighborhood, given its density, given the relationship with everything else. So that's the only reason I say these are representative. But we can go through a, a couple of them, again, you know, this, this is about uh, about two thousand square feet, it's a version of, of homes that I built in other communities. Again, two different versions that he, he flipped through, front porches, some nice detailing, a few different colors and variations, you see the garages off the the back, using some metal uh, you know, columns and on the porches, using some details, some metal roof, having clapboard, having some battening board, um just different textures, but generally you're kind of colonial, I mean, you're, you're modern farmhouse looking feel, uh you know, with a range of options that uh, that people can select. It's just a, a, you know, again, this is a sample of a floor plan with, you know, three bedrooms up. You know, this home is about uh twenty-four hundred square feet, you know, study on the first floor, great room, open the kitchen and dining, three bedrooms upstairs, so pretty traditional design. But compact, garages being in the back, you can kind of get a sense of the space, people can have a patio, they can have a play area, they can do what they need to do. We have homes generally on one side, you know, we have them close together, so that they'll have a little, a broader side yard, as you can see here. Garaging, we also cluster on, on one side, so again, they have, you know, more space adjacent to it. So really focused on trying to make all that space usable. Given the site, it's relatively flat, it will be relatively flat when it's built, so I think all this space will be usable, we don't got all these grates and pitches and things that would be. So, give it to the next one. This is a sample of uh one of the homes for the exterior. Again, similar detailing, side-loaded garage, so if you compare it to uh, you know, really these homes. One garage for the two homes, side-loaded, again, um keeps the vehicles off the street. Really the most challenging aspect to building dense housing is cars, terrible. Oh, okay, thank you. So dealing with cars, more importantly, the garaging of cars is really hard, you know, you try to do a, a modest-sized home that's you know, twenty-six feet wide, and then you do a, a twenty, twenty-two-foot garage next to it, it's a scale that's really difficult to make it, you know, charming and have the look and feel that you want. So that's part of the reason why, you know, we do the side-loaded garages, we're doing the detached garages completely off of alleys, so people won't even be driving in, you know, the front of their homes, so uh it's really a, a very specific intent to make this a more people and, and home-oriented development than, than vehicle-oriented development. So when you drive through it, that's gonna be the sense that uh I hope everybody has. You know, the next one, I think there's a floor plan that would be ideal for anybody to see. This one happens to have a first-floor master, again, it's uh, you know, three bedrooms, two and a half baths, pretty, you know, pretty you know, traditional design with a side-loaded garage, so there's a lot of flexibility in terms of how that's gonna be done there. The next one. This is the, more of the, the village-style home that we have, that are, that's located back here, you know, we did the the garages that are attached to what we did, and you'll see in the plan, and I've done this on uh a site that I'm recently finishing, we kind of build a little deck in the middle of it. Uh, cause these homes are, they're the closest together, so there's very little side yard. The front yard is relatively short, so there's, for this style of home, there's not as much open space in and around it. But we can go to the floor plan, and we kind of build in a, a small little, you know, patio area where at least they can have some private space, they can have a grill, they can have a place to sit out, have a bite to eat, um instead of, you know, being on the front porch if they wanna be outside or being somewhere else. They'll have some porch in the back with the, the detached aspect of it, but overall, it's just a tighter design than the other homes, they're not gonna have as much space on the sides to enjoy, so we incorporate some space for that. Go to the next one, try to remember, here uh kind of showing up front, one thing that, you know, we kind of had it on as, you know, a dot, 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 is this zone up front. Given the density, given the number of homes, um we've incorporated a, a small clubhouse, pool, playground for kids. Uh so that they, you know, they have an area, we've got walking trails, but, you know, we've got young families here. These are the types of things that some people are gonna wanna use, the homes are more modest in size, people, you know, may not be able to have everything or need it, so uh that's the intention for um, um for the clubhouse, really intended to be about, I think it's about twenty-eight hundred, three thousand square feet, so it's not, not a huge structure. You know, would have small, you know, meeting rooms and common areas and bathrooms and, uh and that's about it, and those, I'll uh, I can, I'll provide those designs, we're still finishing things up. We've got a good amount of parking there for overflow. You know, we've got bike racks, we've got charging stations that we'll put there, we've got charging stations we'll put by the multi-family. EV charging stations, we'll have some in the parking areas out here. For the uh rental uh cottages, you know, the single-family homes, they have garages, they can put, they can put their own electric stations, they don't need it, so. So um to just kind of, you know, be up with the times, this secondary access that you see here that will not be open, that'll be composed, it's really convertency access. We did that in conjunction with the uh with fire department, um so that they have a second means to be safe. So and a good amount of parking to accommodate probably more than we need, but you know, better safe than sorry. So let's go to the next slide. Talking about some uh macro stuff in general, as Chairman mentioned. So the community itself, one of the cool, I think, what would be one of the nicer parts about it is we have a a trail that will be going in, that will go around the property, ultimately, you know, swinging down by, you know, the the wells are up here. That's what we'll talk about on the next slide with infrastructure. I I think the total distance, if you go from here around the community land, around the south port, probably cost a five mile trail, which uh will be open, available to the public. This is intended to be more of a of a natural gravel path. Uh we're not looking to take down vegetation for it. So in some areas where it's not open, we'll we'll work to, you know, kind of meander through the trees. Uh we've got some areas that are wetlands that we'll need to work with you guys to make sure that that we locate it. We've got other areas that will be tying into existing park paths uh from the golf course. But if, you know, we've got, you know, tie in points throughout the, you know, throughout the property for people. So uh the residents can enjoy it. That will be public, part of the reason for the extra parking down there if people are coming. They can have some parking to uh, you know, to stop and enjoy the path. Um we have it kind of wrapping around this grove with trees in the front that currently exists and will maintain, and then we're kind of showing it, you know, connecting to what would be the town land for. However, that's developed, but we made sure that we had a specific uh connection there. We may work to have another location for the town, for people to the town of land as well. The central park area that we have up front, kind of the common green, you know, one here that's good size, this one is actually the septic, the leach field for the septic system. This parcel, that's about three quarters of an acre for reference. So it's not like it's a little front yard uh in your house. It's a pretty good size. Uh it's a pretty good sized space. We'll have benches around it. You know, we have bike racks there for people that have been coming down for events, so um you know, the association can can plant things there periodically. Um but really, a nice patch of uh of open space. We have them in the in the the back with septic system is, as we talked about, other pocket parks and and certainly plenty of green space around it, but that's uh, you know, important. We've designated an area back here for community garden. Uh for something, I know that the town has some. Um and yeah, I know there's a question about verifying and it has a suitable light, so so we can certainly do that if we go forward. You know, we've got different lookouts here going on. These are existing, you know, some existing pond that's free, so we'll have benches up here for people that are taking a walk, just have a place to sit down, enjoy the natural aspect of the neighborhood. We talked about modest clubhouse and recreation area for the um for the residents with pool and playgrounds. Uh we've met with the post office, so we'll have mail stations. They'll be in the building here. We'll have a mail station here for um, you know, for the rentals in the back. We'll have a mail station here um for uh the single family homes. We've got pull up so they can get off the streets um safely. Um for parking, as I said, everybody has a a two car garage, obviously with the driveways, they've got areas to load additional cars. For these kind of larger um crossways, these have a designated parking along the street for visitors. So we've got about, you know, I think about forty spaces between the two of them. You know, there's excess parking for the multifamily. We've got parking here as well. The uh and in the, you know, in the back, we've got some extra ones too. The the roadway, it's 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 wide enough, you know, it come Christmas, come Christmas, come holiday, people have people, everybody parks everywhere. So we can say whatever we wanna say, but from a practical sense, there will be times where people will park on the street. But it will be restricted that people can't park on the street on a regular basis. So you know, if someone has, you know, two kids and four cars, it's not a problem. They can't park up the street. They gotta find a way to make it work within their uh, within their 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 driveways. So um we we do, we have a, I I think a reasonable amount of parking available collectively to service the site. Uh really for the bulk of activities, but there are some times of the year and the events, it it just, it is what it is. Uh I say coordinated, yet varied home styles. You know, I I don't want, I I don't want plenty of the same houses. We wanna mix, so we have different colors, we have different styles. The outside versus the inside would be different, different sizes, different treatments and such that we're dealing with. Lighting, people always ask these days, nobody really wants a lot of lights in these developments. Anything that we do will be residential, like you have in your own yards. What I I I I do in a lot of places now is we have, you know, streetlights for the people. These are gonna be, you know, the homes will be relatively close on the interior ones, so people will have lights on their porches. We'll have post lights for people. Typically, we just tie it in the photo cells, they come on, but they're, like I said, the modest size that you have in your yard, nothing commercial. We don't have any big parking lots that need to line up. They'll have a couple of areas that, you know, will provide lighting at intersections. Um but the intention is really just to have this, you know, low glow on the property that people have enough light to be out walking around, feel comfortable. But you know, this isn't intended to look like a soccer field and and shape the form um anywhere on the site. Uh speed control through the site. The the goal here is to have people about, we've got sixty two, you know, plus housing. We've got what will hopefully be family housing. You know, we're hoping people are gonna be out walking around, kids will be on bike safety and and speed is gonna be a huge issue. What we designed is really a series of raised um sidewalks uh at a number of places throughout the property. I think we've got six of them, seven of them. Um that will be raised. People will need to physically slow down to maintain the same speed throughout the property for the benefit of everybody. So might be annoying, um but it it the the end of the day, it's 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 an important aspect to the site, given the range of people that we're hoping, that that we're hoping and we expect to be living back. So that's the general overview. If you can go to the next one, we talked about infrastructure. More stuff to talk about, so it's a little smaller. Water is through uh public water supplies. Um given the size of the site, it's hard to get it on one sheet. Um but the wells, there's three wells that will be located up here. The wells have been approved based on their design, based on the intended zone ones for the wells. The process that we need to go through for these wells is really the same process if if a town, call it a public water supply. Because if the town did a well, they're gonna do the exact same thing that I'm doing. We've got flow of about sixty thousand gallons, so we've got three wells at twenty thousand gallons a piece designated along that back section. We have them approved. We went out to do them last year. Hard to get back there with the hills and slopes and the equipment, so um we didn't get them in when we wanted to, so I still have to drill them. But the locations have been in and approved. Uh we did space them far enough apart that if capacity, if there were any questions, we had areas to add additional wells, but hopefully the three will do it. Those are permitted uh directly through DEP. So there's no waivers of any standards as it relates to them because it's affordable housing. It isn't done. There's really no connection with the local border health. It is all directly through DEP. Similarly, with the wastewater treatment facility, uh this will be a wastewater treatment system as compared to a septic system that you may have, likely have in your own yards. This is uh, you know, in your system, it goes into the tank, the solids settle, the liquids go, you pump it out aeroically, and you have, you know, kind of dirty water going in and um kind of designed for progressive failure. For the wastewater treatment, they collect all the solids, they treat all the solids, they treat all the liquids. Um and then uh it's essentially, you know, they call it clean water, but I'll go with gray water, uh that goes back into the system. So uh there's very, um you know, it's it's substantially clean water that goes back into the system. This is the area for um the primary uh system. There is a reserve system that's up here as well. Smaller than what you typically see. A, the soils are good back here, so that makes it smaller by its nature. And uh the fact that it's it's clean water that's going in, so the the requirements for the amount of area that you need is uh is more limited. So kind of two benefits to keep that focused a little bit. The roadways, as we said, this will be a private community. These aren't gonna, you know, the town of Stowe is not gonna be paying to maintain these roads, to file these roads. That will be done in conjunction with um the homeowners association. I'll talk about that a little bit more on uh further on the slide. The drainage um has been uh, you know, really detailed plan put together. The town will be having peer review to look at it. Anybody wants to go through six hundred pages of calculations, add it. The town does have copies of it, but the the design is relatively straightforward. We do a lot of infiltration on the site. Infiltration is kind of a low impact development technique that DEP prefers. Instead of taking the water and pulling it away uh from the site, infiltration puts it back into the ground. So uh really for the all of the the detached houses, that you've got your roof drains, you'll have gutters and roof drains that will go into a a small infiltration basin um to deal with that. You know, roadway and other surface runoff, um a a percentage of that goes into larger infiltration bases. Um and then some of the others, it goes into the drainage square in the center. And ultimately kind of flows into the the wetlands and flows away as it as it normally did. Um the state stormwater management policy, same thing as public water supply, wastewater treatment. That's the standard um that we need to meet. There's no uh no relief from it. Uh there's a whole bunch of other technical stuff that people can talk about that's beyond my pay grade. But at the end of the day, uh our mandate is to make sure, A, there's a certain amount of infiltration that's required. We're well above that. And from the design standard, we need to make sure that that the water leaving the site is at really the same rate. And you know, no more um for the two, five, ten, twenty, hundred years form, whole bunch of stuff. So that's all been designed and baked into the site. They spent, you know, eight months designing it, so um. Conservation Commission. We have requested a waiver to the local bylaw. I always do. Um the Safe Weapons Protection Act is the driver for it. Um we have uh met with the Conservation Commission. We have established the boundaries of the wetlands on the property. That was done and and is still in effect. There was a question that I had received from somebody saying, hey, how come, you know, we're we're, you know, we're waiving sixty five percent of the bylaw? And for people that aren't familiar with it, a a hundred feet within the wetlands, that's the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. Doesn't mean you can't work in there. It means that to work in there, you need to work with a local agency and make sure that it's reasonable and appropriate. The town has a a thirty five foot offset that they like. We've we've met that in really throughout the bulk of the plan. There's a couple of of locations that were a little closer that we'll be working with the Conservation Commission on. And we will need to get an order of conditions. I generally from a timing wise to submit it, I usually wait until uh ZBA has done the peer review, drainage has been reviewed. So we know that everything works, and then we're kind of focusing on uh critical areas that may be a concern of the Conservation Commission. So we'll start that process once we get through that aspect of, you know, um the town's engineers reviewing our engineers' work and making sure that everybody's on the same page, that what we have meets the standards and is the appropriate design. Hi.
You're you're doing great. Only just to keep things just moving a little bit. Everything's been great. Uh maybe like a five, six.
Yeah, I I think I've only got one more slide after this.
Perfect, great, thank you.
I I figured I I'm winding down.
No, no worries, no worries. Take your time. Great, thank you.
Uh next one, green initiatives, a couple of things that we can talk about. Uh the drainage infiltration is a significant one, really. It was generally the low impact development techniques of trying to keep too much on the site. You know, kind of uh make uh the the building area dense and having open space around it, significant component of it. People were asking, you know, will will solar panels be allowed here and on the same family homes? I thought um that won't be restricted within the community. For the rental properties, for the detached cottages, and for a sixty two plus, you know, those will be uh uh all all electric homes uh with heat pumps, uh designs and air conditioning. I haven't committed to the single family homes yet. You know, we'll see how efficient they are when we're getting ready to build them. There is gas in the street. I have these propane, but I don't think we really have space here. So I ideally, if we can use all electric for all the homes, we'd we'd love to. For me, it's it's a combination of things and talking without some power and light. They're saying, you know, and I think the timeframe's gonna come down, but they called me about four months ago and said, you know, hey, uh if you need condensers, Mark, they're like two hundred plus weeks wait, which is crazy. So um to put more emphasis on the grid, that certainly is having a hard time keeping up. Um I'm just, I'm holding off before I'm gonna commit to it for lack of a better reason. Lack of a better um answer. It's just, I I really don't know how much it will, you know, that it can handle with these homes. For the smaller homes, I'm using them. I will have an indication of how people feel about them, if they're comfortable with using them throughout the home, which I expect that they will be. Uh so the bigger homes, we'll see. So it's a potential for it. But I'm I'm not uh willing to commit to it at this point. We've got the, you know, charging stations we'll have throughout the homes. Obviously, people will be able to have that in their own homes. These days, all the efficiencies as it relates to insulation and windows and doors and energy star stuff, they're crazy. Uh these homes are so tight, you know, before you had to have a bathroom fan working just to create makeup air. This most recent change uh for January one, now you have to have a whole system, a called ERV system, to have makeup air in the house because you literally have no pressure coming into the house. So it, you know, my buildings are good. Any new structures that you see are very tight. The products are much better than they used to be. So the the cost to operate these homes just in general, with or without the electric usage, will be substantially lower than you've seen in past years. Carbon area maintenance, as I said, that will be part of the association. Fire protection, um fire department requested uh the emergency access, which we did. We also have um three areas where we've got systems, thirty thousand gallon systems for fire protection at their request, and they're comfortable with it. Uh the multifamily building, that will have um a sprinkler system, so uh that'll be protected. The the design of the property um and how it will operate has been a question for some people is uh what will happen is you've got the three main zones that we talked about. You've got uh multifamily homes, uh multifamily building of twenty five units. That will be in the hands of one owner. You have the the forty rental cottages, again, that will be in the hand of one owner. And then you have a hundred and twenty five houses, a hundred and twenty four houses that will be conveyed to people. So essentially, all of these homes, there'll be one community umbrella that will oversee the entire property and fund the entire property. Essentially, the components who pays for that umbrella and how it's based will be based uh, you know, roughly on area, roughly on on septic usage and water because that's the the biggest driver for it. So the approximate numbers are about seventy five percent for the single family homes, twenty percent for the uh the rental properties, and five percent for uh for the multifamily homes. So they get their valuation, you know, the individual people, just like a condo fee, they'll pay a a certain amount to maintain things. But it it should be pretty reasonable uh since they're individual lots, they get their own insurance and all that stuff. I think that's just about it. I think I got a couple of other catch up things. One more slide. Yeah, again, just a quick overview. Sixty nine acres, twenty nine single family, six multi, talked about that, fifty percent open space, walking trail. Um number of affordable homes. There's forty six homes that will be deemed restricted as affordable. So that's thirty one for the single family. Thirty one, that's twenty five percent of the one twenty four. Twenty five percent of the forties is ten, and then um five of the of the rentals, so that's your forty six houses. All of the rental units count. So the total benefit to the town from affordable housing is ninety six uh affordable units. With those ninety six units, the town's at your ten percent. So upon the approval of this, the town would have the ability to say no to other affordable projects. So upon the approval of this, the town would have the ability to say no to other affordable projects should you choose. So that's a good thing. I I talked about some of the offsets around it. But that's really it. The focus is to, and it's always been, to try to create a community that's more reflective of the entire community. You know, what could have been built here if, you know, the town didn't step in and take the actions that it did. I, you know, was probably a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty, thirty-five hundred square foot homes at acre and a half lots and a, you know, a million and a half dollars. So this was a very specific intent to try to get properties that that meet the needs of everybody that's currently living in town and have that be reflected in the in the population. So, you know, the trust and the Conservation Commission planning, everybody has really been involved in this from from the very beginning. So it's 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 been a privilege to get to this point and hopefully, the zoning board will will be as supportive. I think that's it.
All right, thank you so much. What I'd like to do now is allocate about twenty-ish minutes or so. Doesn't need to be all twenty minutes. For board members, staff, or consultants, if he has any initial questions. And any representative of a board or commission who is speaking on behalf of that board or commission to make any initial comments, ask any questions. Again, a reminder, there'll be a lot of meetings. So if you do not get to your questions or you don't have any for tonight, right, that's okay. And same with the other individuals I mentioned. So I guess I'll start with the board.
Oh, good. On the affordable houses, you said they're deed restricted.
Yes.
So to clarify, does that mean in perpetuity?
Yeah, the single family homes in in particular, those are deed restricted in perpetuity. Anytime that they're like ninety-nine years and anytime it sells, it gets re-conveyed. That the old D riders, which I know were in effect and the town has had a couple of issues with, they had limited times and the pricing was crazy. They've changed the pricing formula. So now, when it comes time to sell it in the future, the pricing is based on the current same economics of what they're priced on today. So it starts at the people's income and then you kind of, you know, there's a window of affordability. And then you back into it based on current interest rates, current real estate tax rates, insurance, condo fees, et cetera. So in in ten years, if someone wants to to sell the home, whatever that income is, that kind of starts it. That's how the price gets set. Before, it was on the percentage of things. And, you know, some homes went from ninety-five thousand to, you know, three hundred thousand, which no affordable buyers could afford. So that's been corrected subsequent, uh, been corrected from an administrative perspective in conjunction with the state. The rental units are, they're, you know, they're 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 essentially always affordable, but the specific timeframes, I think, on those regulatory agreements are thirty years. But they're essentially always affordable because if you couldn't do it under existing zoning, then you can't take them out of anything. So they are essentially in perpetuity. I just wanted to clarify that, so.
Is there some regulation on the rental part or is that just a market situation?
No, 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 there's there are ten of the, ten of the units are affordable rentals. They need to go to people that meet income standards as well, the same eighty percent income standards. They get they get recertified every year. And they can go, I think they can go up to a hundred and twenty percent of the income before they'd be forced to leave. So you move into it, you meet the income standard, you get a raise the next year, you're not forced to get out. You get to a point that you're making too much over the limit, then then you you need to leave and free it up for another affordable rental.
Just a couple more questions if I can. Why don't I just kind of go around and we'll get back?
Sure, that's okay.
All right.
Just to clarify, do does your design meet the the new specialized building energy code or just?
They will, yeah, yeah, they will, they'll they'll need to. So and the current homes that I'm building, the cottages that I'm building, we we need to comply with everything. I I have no idea what they'll be like any year from now. So I gotta say we're gonna meet it because we don't have any choice exactly what they'll look like. You know, that'll be an open, open question. But yes, we will need to comply with it.
And and just quick suggestion, putting my, so commission hat on. I was just looking at designers, I was wondering if you could change one of the street names for Maple Dale.
You know, it's funny, we talked about that last night. I met with a bunch of the neighbors and I I I wrote it, we talked about it, for this section of the street here in front of the the building, because we really don't have, I've got these names. But we talked about that last night. I actually wrote it on my plan, so I'll add it, make it official. Thank you.
That's a win.
That's a win, yeah.
So just, if we're talking about three comprehensive permits here, is the infrastructure cut across all of those? Is there any consideration that if we have something going on with infrastructure, it's going to impact any of those permitting processes?
No, I I I don't foresee it to do that because the water is serving everybody.
Yeah.
The sewer is serving everybody, the roadways are serving everybody. So it's a it's a little bit, it's it's kind of an odd scenario because we've got.
One thing with the fail, is there anything that's predicated on that thing not getting approved?
No, no, no. I, no, I don't foresee that being the case. It's really, the nature of the of the multiple permits is because of the administrative nature of the different types of housing. Do you agree with that ever?
I think that makes sense. I mean, I I was wondering about that when it came in.
Yeah.
Could it have just been under a single one? But if it's under three, it's over.
Yeah, ultimately, I'm gonna need to do three regulatory agreements. So I, you know, this, my perspective is that, you know, if the board, we settle in on all the plans that work, we can come up with a scenario for the permit, how that permit should read to recognize the three. It could be one permit with a recognition of of three regulatory agreements and controls that will be in there. So I think that there's a couple of different ways that we can do it. I haven't had to deal with this before candidly. So I think as we help, we can reach out to, you know, to DHCD. I have talked with them about it, they dealt with it before. So I think we can come up with scenarios that work. But that's that's the intention of it. Each of these needs to be in a separate ownership to comply with their standards, so.
Okay.
That's how it works.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I produced a document with a lot of questions, just one line questions if you have.
I just.
I'll be covering them all eventually, but one thing, I want to cut, two things here. One is dead in alleys. I realize you haven't designed the streets yet or the alleys yet. Dead in alleys causes a problem for me. And I think it'll cause a problem for the fire department also.
I I I have met with the fire chief. You know, they're, A, they're, 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 these are not, they're not long alleys. And there's only, you know, there's a couple of them. You know, that are servicing a few homes. He felt that the other advantage is that, you know, we can get to them from different areas. So I I did go through it specifically with the with the fire. But I'm certainly. Yeah, certainly happy to talk about it.
Build out.
Yeah.
What is your schedule for build out? Do you plan to start at one section or one type of house and proceed or are you doing them all at the same time?
I think, you know, realistically, and you talked a little bit about this in the last night, the the entire water system needs to be in, entire sewer system needs to be in, really, this main loop roadway needs to be in. So as I have said, that, you know, the homes are the economic driver of the development. I think we'll have the ability to work with all of them. Realistically, I think we're probably looking at about four years to to build it out. Depending on how the market goes. So, you know, I think that's reasonable. We've got a certain amount of site work before, you know, just to get things organized on the on the site. Here, you know, the site, fortunately, it's it is relatively flat. At the end of the day, and you know, the, we have ground monitoring wells in for the for the treatment. This past spring was incredibly wet, which I think everybody experienced. And, you know, even though when doing the digging, it was no modeling, there was nothing. You know, the water ended up coming up like two or three feet above what anybody expected. So we had to raise up that section and, you know, we're kind of feathering that in. So that'll be, you know, a little bit of a of a bump per se. But for the most part, you know, it it's really, you know, if anything, there might be a small amount of fill that comes into the site. But, you know, really, you know, not a whole bunch of heavy earth moving equipment. It's all, it's all gravel out there, it's all beautiful material everywhere. So we're not gonna be blasting and doing all that kind of stuff.
How high is the water table?
It's it's relatively low. I mean, even up front, the the worst, I want to say the worst area. As you come down on this section of the site, you can see you've got your surface water, there's wetlands that are back here. In here, we were maybe five feet. You get up here into the center and we were, I think, ten to twelve feet. And over the the septic area, you know, we've got the offsets given to it. That, those pop up a couple of feet from the monitoring wells. Again, there was no modeling when we when we dug them. So, but still generally, we've got eight to, you know, for the bulk of the site, I would say we're probably at about eight feet plus. So I I nothing that I'm I'm really concerned about at all. And again, the soils are all are all two-minute soils, very porous sand, really well draining. So so I think that will be, in terms of having, there's a lot of work, but it's all pretty easy. You know, we're not dealing with ledge, we're not dealing with hills, we're not dealing with blasting. So relatively straightforward and I think pretty low impact for, you know, the, you know, the surrounding area. But if 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 I said that I was gonna be out there for two years, you could tell me to go to hell. So I I I four years, I think, is is a realistic target. The market's slower, it'll be slower. If it's faster, I'll go faster. But that's a realistic guess for the homes. And we'll deal with the cop, we'll deal with the rental stuff, you know, as timing and and funding and and such allows for those where they're kind of separate properties. But that's the general target at times.
The, I don't know how to describe it, the secondary access, where where it's, I think it's the other community center and the pool.
Yeah.
You said that that access is gonna be controlled just just through signage?
No, no, the VA would be gated with a lock box.
Okay.
Junction with the fire department.
Okay, and they're they're the owners would be able to access it. So even the residents would be able to go.
No.
Okay. Take just ten seconds, the community, you described, in terms of the, essentially the management of the area, you described it as sort of a community umbrella organization, I guess, which you'd have like kind of a seventy-five, it's twenty-five, but in reality, it's twenty-five. Because assuming you would be the.
Assuming, but I I could tell one of the others, that's why I'm making it clear.
That's right. What sort of organization would that be?
Well, you'd have, it'd be the the homeowners, the homeowners association for the hundred and twenty-four families. That would be run kind of like a condominium. So they have trustees, so maybe they have five people representing them, that that's seventy-five percent. And then, you know, the voting rights for, in terms of making financial decisions and the overall management of it, you know, would be a percentage for the rental cottages and a percentage for the sixty-two plus. You know, talking about, you know, overall, you know, of 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 planning and, you know, issues that come up, that would be within that umbrella trust as a, as an or as an organization. But essentially, legally, you have the trust at the top and then these these three other entities below it that funnel the funds up and have the voting rights for other issues that that would be affected by the association. Clear?
Ruth, any initial questions or comments? Oh, okay.
That was a no.
Before opening up, brothers, Lenny, I think you're.
Yeah, just a couple of things having to do with the roadways.
Sure.
Do you know how wide the roads would be?
We've got a a range of them. The the roads on the the entrance are twelve feet each on either side. The main roadway, I think, is twenty-four, that includes the berm, so I think it's twenty-two per pavement. I think it's, I want to say it's twenty-two for the central one. The broader streets in the center, I think, are twenty-two. And then the alleys are are twenty, that go off of that to service it.
And and just, the other thing is parking. What if, like, somebody, like, has overnight guests, you know, where would they park and be okay for them to park on, you know, on the on the road next to the house? In this, in that kind of circumstance?
We we have, we do have parking in kind of those central boulevards that would be the intention for that. And people have, you know, there will be additional spaces, you know, in people's driveways and such. The preference and the preference is to not have people parking on the main road on a regular basis. So i- if someone has someone overnight and they end up staying, that's that's okay. But it will be controlled that there's no designated parking on the street on a regular basis for people that live there, residents, kids, et cetera. So you have company, you know, we can say whatever we want, but those things happen. It does, it is wide enough for it for parking on one side of the street. I I did have those conversations with the fire chief as well.
You did, right.
Yeah, but on a a specific basis, we we're not gonna allow people to park on the street day to day.
Good, just a quick question. The wastewater building is near the clubhouse, correct?
Correct.
Which probably would be visible from the street. How's that, what's that gonna look like? Is that still gonna meld in with?
It'll it'll blend in with everything that we have, the same kind of design. Somebody asked about one of the residents the other night. They go to the the villages at Stowe, they've got they've got a a white building and a red building on the street. That red building, it's the wastewater treatment. Nobody knows what it is. It's, will be the same thing here. It will be designed to be integrated. It will be integrated from a design perspective with everything else. So I won't have a big sign that says.
Be easy.
Just wanna give Valerie, Michael, if you have any sort of questions or comments this time.
Big picture, no questions or comments. Back, I have something that would kind of wrap up the short.
Sure. Ezra?
Sure, and you're also. Thanks. So again, I'm Ezra Glenn, I'm consultant. First off, just by way of intro, let you know, I am here to work for you, for the town, but it's not costing any of you anything. It's actually, it's program Mass Housing Partnership provides, knowing that fortyBs just sort of show up on your doorstep. And it's a lot of work suddenly when you're doing all your other work. So they've said, look, I've paid for them, but I work for you mostly to help these folks manage the process and help you sort of you focus on what really matters here.
Appreciate it.
One thing I often do is a quick intro to how fortyB works, but I think you did that, you you earned my beat for me there. You hit everything I would have hit. You know, and I think I don't have any specific questions here as much as some suggestions for probably for later on as we talk about the structure of the process.
Great.
The only other thing I would point out that I would have added to the intro is, you know, it's it's different from your normal reviews, it's it's comprehensive, it's flexible, it's expedited. It's also got a sort of different standard of review. I think towards are very used to, you know, sitting in a position of of a fair amount of power, saying, you know, we already have our standards. If you're not meeting them, why? You know, why should this happen, right? Here, it's almost flipped. It's sort of, if some, if if the developer is requesting some sort of waiver, the question for you, it doesn't mean, oh, you gotta just say, okay. But the question for you is, is that gonna cause any problem? And if so, what do we do about that? Can we mitigate that problem? Can we modify it so that we don't see that problem? But but that's really the key is to identify the problems, not go through it like a lawyer and find every place it it doesn't meet standard, right? And in some ways, that can result in a legal project. Also, I've mentioned, in, and we could go over this later as well, but in some of the recent court cases, it's been very clear, while there's a lot that you're here to review for all those local approvals, you don't do any of the state laws, we know that, and that was clear. There's also some decisions that are left up to the subsidizing agency. Especially, you know, a lot of towns ask very good questions about affordability, how's that gonna work, how the lottery's gonna work. Technically, those things really are controlled by the subsidizing agency. And while it's not wrong to ask questions about it, if we start adding conditions and restrictions, we can get in a kind of, you know, a situation there where really that's up to a different authority. So I didn't sense that.
Can I just chip in with that? And you'll offer us real-time guidances if we start to stray?
Yes, exactly.
Thank you.
And and it's not like.
So will I.
Yeah. And but on that point, I do like to just make clear, I'm not a lawyer, I don't play one on TV, I'm a planner, like these folks planners and like all of you, I expect you to understand the law, we work with it, but we also consult with town council as much as possible, you know, especially when it comes to underwriting the decisions. So I think that's about all I had, other than ideas on how to structure the process, which we can get.
Of course, and we'll definitely talk about that as well. So and also just for your identification, we had a session. we had a session, was it November, December, actually with town council, literally to go over the 40B process. Not, there was no discussion, just to be clear, there was no discussion of this particular application. It was really meant to be more of an informational process for us to understand the law, the standards and whatnot, so.
Well, they did a good job and you guys all paid attention, sounds nice.
And just one thing I can add for that, like the lotteries and all that stuff, I, I have, I have a housing services firm. We do lotteries all over the state for for sale and rentals. So I, I'm, I'm very well versed in that aspect as well. So if those questions come up, even as, I, I may have to reach out to my office, but I can get the answer for it. But the basic process of it, I, I certainly am familiar with it, understand the concerns of the town, understand the, you know, the concerns and the needs of, of the prospective home buyers or renters as well, so.
You did it for the villagers, didn't you?
We did for the villages, yeah, we, we do it, we do it everywhere.
Anyone from a local board or commission here to speak on behalf of the board or commission? And I know we received some comments, yes?
Hi, I'm Mike Teskey, I'm representing the Fourwell Housing Trust. We sent a letter that hopefully Michael will receive and share with you in support of the project. So in general, we're, we just love the blend of different, different types of housing and the way it's cited, keeping a lot of the, in, in cooperation with the conservation and with the trust. We, this is just as about as good a project as we could hope on this, from our perspective, as about as good a project as we could hope on this space. Wanted to have one comment kind of question is that, Mark, you said that with the, with the number of units, we'd be over 10%. But if you look at it for 2024 now, it's going to take four years to build. That means we'll get two years of safe harbor before the number goes up again. So, and then we'll probably be under 10% again. So we'll get, not to say that we shouldn't do this or anything, but it'll make it much more inclusive. But it's not going to be like, oh, we're going to, we got 10 years of, of backstroking. It's only going to be two years of safe harbor and before we have, so that means we can need to continue while this is going on, looking for other projects and continuing to build housing. So, that's all.
This project will put us over.
Yeah, just a little while.
You look at the benefits when you. I have a little more running room, but the comment is true. And I'm not, I'm not someone that, I, it was, it was a comment that, it was a board of selectmen member made in a town that I was doing some work on. They were approving a big rental project, it was in a location that, you know, that they thought it was a good site for. And he said, look, let's just approve this project and we get our zoning back. Meaning, you know, you don't got to deal with these little projects going all over the place. But that doesn't mean you don't have to support additional affordable housing. It's just that, you know, you can have a, you know, you're not forced to deal with something. You can deal with things that, that you think are beneficial and, and support the town's vision. And I just thought it was a really, you know, really insightful comment. So.
Before moving on, I'll give them to the board and one more opportunity at least for right now, questions, comments?
Just one, it's the concern with regard to the electrical requirements and what the, what Hudson Light and Power was suggesting with regards to units that are two, 200 months out, that's, you know, four, five years.
You know, if, if you're not an optimist in my business, you don't get out of bed. So I can't imagine that's not going to resolve itself sooner. It could, it, it's, it is a concern, you know, and, but he did say if I wanted to order, if I gave him a check for 700,000.
150 instead of 200.
Yeah, yeah. So it, it is a concern. I, I do expect that'll work itself out, even though there was some materials that was pandemic related. It's, it's going to be, it's, you know, I, I'm mindful of it, but I, I can't stop.
Yeah, I get it.
So I'm optimistic that, that it will advance. Could that impact absorption? It could. I, it, but it's, it's too early to tell.
Yeah.
But it, it is a, it is a significant concern. But, you know, we'll see, we'll check in again at the end of the summer, we'll see how things are. But yeah, if I can't get power, I can't start the project. So that's, that's there. But I, we've been, we've been sourcing it in other places. So I think Hudson Power being a smaller entity, you know, might be a little bit further down the totem pole than Mass Electrics. You know, they're, they're awful in lots of ways, but we've been able to get equipment from them. Not to the scale that we need here, but that is something that could be staggered, that could, we could work it through to a, to a certain extent. But it, it could impact our schedule. But hopefully by then, things work themselves out to a certain, as best they can.
Just a concern.
It's a true point.
Okay, please, you have the parting shot.
Less than a question, I'm just kind of saying, pointing out things, I'm still trying to understand. It's just still the reasoning with the, kind of between the three comprehensive permits versus it being the one project. Balance with what you were saying with the umbrella, how that relates to things like the waste, waste treatment center and things like if one part of the project were ever to be sold off or something.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't matter. Yeah, so they would, if, if, if one part of the, you know, if the, the multifamily building was sold to a third party, their obligations under the trust, they remain, they're the same. They still have the same percentage of the expenses that they need to pick up. So that, that wouldn't, it wouldn't change, it wouldn't change anything. The nature of, and, and we'll say that, you know, the multiple permits or the, you know, the multiple entities is to comply with the affordable housing statutes. It also makes good sense to just deal with the reality that, that these are assets that are being developed, that assets do get sold. And it needs to be structured to be able to handle that. But the main initial criteria for the multiple permits is to be in compliance with the HCD guidelines. Is that answering?
Almost. I guess I'm still trying to get my head around, around that piece, but that's just.
Can I just ask you a question about that, whether the governance aspect of this is within our four corners or is that outside the scope of what we need to consider?
We will be reviewing homeowners association document and comment on it.
Yeah, Ezra, I think you.
Yeah, I would, you know, there's, I think you alluded earlier on to sort of coming up with all the different things you're going to want to review. You know, and generally, we start pretty far out, you know, look at traffic, we make sure there's, there's emergency access, all that. And at the end, we get to, you know, both stuff like details like screening and lighting, but also management phasing and all of that. I suspect, number one, given all the groundwork you've done, if, if, you know, that, that's out with town officials, we can hopefully get through a lot of that fairly quickly and really save that time for those really sticky questions and make sure we have belts, suspenders and garters or whatever else we need.
I've got, I've got the first draft of the document, so then.
Your experience of this.
We know what we're dealing with, but by my expectations, you will review them. The same thing, if, you know, if we get a little bit further than some of the blanks can be filled in. But it is my intention to provide the draft documents for the benefit of the board, for the trust, for the, the umbrella trust and for the homeowners association. You know, those are really the two, the two main entities, then, you know, the umbrella trust has, you know, the ownership of the other parties. But, you know, but what they, what people can and can't do on the property, all that is tied into the homeowners association, which I think is a very important document that will dovetail with, with what we do here. So it is important, I do think, as, as we said, it's a little bit further down the line once we deal with some of the technical aspects. But I have every expectation of giving you the opportunity to review approval. So that's understood.
And, and to tease it out, one aspect of the proposed schedule is exactly a meeting that discusses this, which is also going to be much deeper down the line.
Yeah.
So with that, I do want to open it up to general public questions and comments. Running a little over time, but we can allot, you know, about 15 or 20 minutes at a moment. Just a couple of reminders, I'm going to start with people in the room and then we'll go to Zoom, just to keep it organized. I promise I'm not discriminating on the Zoom people, we'll flip it the next time. But try to keep your questions and comments somewhat concise, yes?
Yeah, one useful tool sometimes, if there are things, concerns people have that they want to have addressed somewhere along the way, we don't need to always address them right now.
Agreed. Yeah, no, absolutely. And one of the things I wanted to note is again, we will have subject-based meetings coming up, which we will discuss and hopefully agree upon. And so there are many opportunities to provide your questions and comments then. And as always, you can always email them to staff, you know, we distribute it. A, one final reminder is obviously, please, questions, comments should be directed to the board. Yeah, and is welcome to respond if you would like. You can also certainly respond at a later date if you need to pay the time and want to think about it. You can also exclude the right to not answer at all. So with that, I would ask, is there any members of the public here in the room that would like any questions or comments? Just please state your name and your address. Yes, to the back.
So I'm Helen Ham, 21 Cross Street. I just want to put it on the agenda. I understand that the traffic study that was done does make a recommendation that Cross Street, where I live, become a one-way street and I'm very much in favor of that. So are most of my neighbors that I know of. And so I want to make sure it, it gets addressed appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you. And just again, to tease it, I think traffic will probably be, traffic mobility will probably take a one exclusive meeting going in the future. So I would definitely encourage you to, either listen in or if you have specific questions about any aspect of that, please let us know. Any other questions or comments from members of the public who is right now? We'll go with the man in the back who I think had his hand up just first.
I am Jim Wheeler, 151 Randall Road. First, I'd like to say I think it was quite a very informational presentation. Thank you very much. I also understand that you're going to be taking things in pieces. These informationally are these specific topics that you're going to be addressing, that you guys are going to determine. Do you have any idea when you expect to determine that list and when that list will be available to us? So that if you are interested in traffic or infrastructure, that we'll know when to make ourselves available.
20 minutes?
20 minutes, I listed.
I, I mean, I mean, literally, it's like, one of the next items on my agenda is to go through the, the future meetings. Obviously, and just to be clear, this will be subject to change, but the hope here is to discuss sort of some major topics and some post dates.
All right, thank you.
Just hoping to sneak out.
Yes, sir.
Full page, 115 Wheel Road, it's Butternut Farm Golf Club, just so you know. But the presentation was absolutely great and we're just really supportive of this project that he's going to do. I know he's abutting our project, I can see our holes right there. But just, I think that whole community and all the different facets of it that he's trying to put in there, I think is going to be really good for the town. Thank you.
Yes?
Kathy Svera, I'm the conservation director, but not speaking on behalf of the commission yet. And I just wanted to make sure that the board is aware that in our process of developing a climate resilience master plan for the town mortgage portion of the north course, that Mark has graciously allowed us to include his open space area in our planning. So the goal is to make sure that the trails meet across the property line, that whatever facilities are on one side are, are consistent with the other side. So that process is still planning out. Hope you look forward to answering whatever questions you might have and, and kind of designing that space with you all.
Denise Dunkowski, town administrator. I just want to echo what Mark said in the beginning of his presentation. We have been meeting monthly, sometimes more than that, since I came to town three and a half years ago to work collaboratively on this process. So I'm really excited that it's finally here and this is the first public hearing on it. It is between the north course, the south course, the development, the recreation. I stated this with the Stowe Acres driving range discussion. I think this whole collaboration has been really great for the town. All parties have wanted to work with the town throughout this. So again, I'm just excited, I'm supportive of the project. I think Mark has made, excuse me, great strides to match the sense of the community, the needs of the community and really put a lot of thought into designing it and to what it would look like to meet all different aspects of ages and demographics and affordability. So I just wanted to offer that.
Bob Wilbur, excuse me, Bob Wilbur, president of the Stowe Conservation Trust, 288 Red Day Road. Say a few things. First, just to remind everyone that this project has so many different components, starting with the south course conservation easement. And, and really all of them were conceived together and they all fit sort of comprehensively. And including the economics of this project, making that part of it work. I also want to give Mark credit for, for delivering tonight. The, essentially the proposal that he shared with us way back when and which really got our support because it delivered several types of most needed affordable housing for this community. The next thing I'd say is that it's a really exciting project from the conservation perspective because it creates a new model for how housing can be done, a less land consumptive model. And, and adjacency to open space and integration with open space and trails and so on. And reflecting that, so my, where I work in the, in the conservation world, in the land trust world and conservation world, I've received a lot of invitations to come and speak to land trusts all around the state because they've heard about our little project here in Stowe. And so just to validate the significance of it, it's a, it's a very innovative concept, a comprehensive concept. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Yes?
Eve Donahue, I'm also with the Stowe Conservation Trust, I'm on board. And I just wanted to say that I'm very much in support of this project and have been since I wrote one of the very earliest checks and sent the treasury to Datsun and Flinker.
I just, that took one last word?
And so I also wanted to acknowledge that at least four of us from the board are here tonight and maybe more on Zoom. Oh, hi, Ellen. Five out of 11 and probably more on Zoom have come tonight to support the project.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments from folks in the room? I will open it up, if there's anyone on Zoom that has any questions or comments. Michael, I will let you administer that.
You can just raise your hand on Zoom if you have a question.
We crushed it. They're just saving an ammunition for later.
There are no questions as of right now.
Okay, all right. All right, great. And again, I encourage members of the public who might be listening either live or to a recording in the future. There'll be many opportunities to, to provide questions and comments to the extent that, that you have any, whether it be a topic that we are discussing. I also want to just flag in response to that one question before, if there are topics that we're not planning on maybe devoting an exclusive meeting on and people are thinking, no, we really want you to talk about this, please let us know. You know, the schedule will not be fixed, it can be flexible. And there will be a bit of a wrap-up meeting as well, so we can also provide, for lack of a better term, some miscellaneous topics there as well that may not require, you know, a full, a full hearing. I do also want to just, and also to state for the record, we did receive a number of pieces of correspondence. They are noted in the agenda. I will just refer to the agenda, the only one that is not noted in the agenda actually was Michael's letter, I believe, from the chair of the Stowe Minnesota School for Housing Trust that we did receive. And, but again, we're encouraging all towns, boards and commissions to provide additional comments as well. With that, I believe that is it for our discussion of sort of public comments. I do want to now sort of turn the board's attention to the peer review quotes that we received. They were sent out electronically right before the meeting, but since we didn't, I think there are also some paper copies.
The associates, I just have one copy, so if you could.
Okay.
Share with each other or pass them.
So the science department did solicit quotes for the applications to be peer reviewed. I believe one of the folks that we typically use in which has been put it out, which was the need for quotes. As a reminder, peer reviews provide an opportunity for a neutral third party to review the proposal. The topics can be varied, street design, stormwater management, water, wastewater utilities, et cetera. And it's to help the ZDA and agree in the application, make sure that the project is constructed without, you know, potentially any of that. Effects. Effects. The, any peer review studies, just also for people's identification, will obviously be provided to the applicant and is in turn able to respond, whether in agreement by making some modifications, in rebuttal if they don't agree with the peer review. But certainly, my turn is more often than not to cooperate the process. And changes made also can be conditioned within the ultimate decision. I believe we have one, two, three, four, five.
There's two firms that were able to provide a full peer review of all of the documents submitted. There is one firm that is unable to do the traffic study and has provided two supplemental traffic study estimates for the board to fill in that gap.
So. When will they do?
Today.
So this is it?
This is it.
I guess actually, before opening up the board, I guess I want to get sort of staff's comments and reactions because we haven't had the chance to sort of discuss it. If you have any sort of comments about what we've received, pros, minuses, whatnot.
So the peer reviews where I solicited quotes from our on-call engineers, our typical peer reviewing firm had a conflict of interest, so we were not able to use them. I received a few responses. Some were able to provide new services, some were not. So we have GCG associates who provided a full peer review estimate to us. We have Wright Pierce who also is able to provide a full estimate. And then Dillis and Roy can do all of the civil engineer review, but they will need to use either MDM or Bayside Engineering to do the traffic review for the board. Dillis and Roy, we, they worked on several site plans for clients who have come before the board. We've used them maybe a few times for other smaller projects throughout town. GCG associates, they are currently working on the Crescent Street sidewalk project, so they are familiar with town. Wright Pierce, the planning department has not worked directly with them, but they do have an on-call service with the Highway Department, which is a major part of Public Works. The two traffic study firms were recommended by Dillis and Roy to complement their civil review of the project.
I guess one thing I'm kind of curious, if you have a recommendation, I think you would welcome it. If you don't, that's okay too.
So before you do that, did we do a line item comparison about who can do what and what the cost basis would be to do one versus the other?
And actually, to piggyback on that, one of my distractions is Wright Pierce looks more expensive than everybody else.
That's a great.
Yeah, sorry. That's why I want to know.
Wright Pierce did reach out and talk me through their peer review process. My impression from them was that it was going to be a very highly technical peer review process that's very thorough. It goes into many of the smaller details within the application submitted. The other firms, from my interpretation of their proposals, they are a little bit more general and are more focused on making sure that the development can actually function without having any adverse effects on the people who will be living there or on the abiding properties. So that's my interpretation of why Wright Pierce is a little bit on the higher end, where the other ones are a little bit more.
They were times three.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll add that, yeah, so Dillis and Roy knows, they certainly do know our zoning by law because they've been on the other side of the table quite a bit as well, as Michael said. GCG, I don't, I don't know if the conservation has used them for any peer review, I don't know. But as Michael said, we are using them for traffic consulting. But their proposal is for the full project. So I, I mean, I think you're in good hands with the, within one of these firms, understanding that there is one that is out of range, which might impact the economics of the project for the applicant.
It's huge.
And. Just real quickly, based on.
Three thousand five hundred dollars.
Just based on you guys' experience, is there anything based on the work that they've done for the town or that you've had in terms of interaction with them that caused you concern is between Dillis and Roy and GCG? I'm sorry, I derailed your question initially.
No, that's okay. And the only other question that I would ask is the consultant that we normally use, who's in a conflict for whatever reason, did they give us?
Places, places work. They're working for me on other locations.
But I was looking to know if they hadn't done us any place. In order of magnitude, that they said, oh, we think it's about this. And if they did, was it in the ballpark here?
I didn't reach out to Places for anything.
Okay, okay.
My estimate was about twenty thousand for the size project. GCG was below that, and Dillis and Roy plus one of the other firms would be slightly above that.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Now, with Dillis and Roy, they need one of the other firms for the traffic study, but how much are the estimates for the traffic study?
So do we have any basis other than price to make a decision here?
Dependability, reliability.
So it's really, yeah, it's really just what they've provided. So Michael had asked for, you know, a couple of different points on this, you know, their hourly work, any information they can give us about their team. And they, you know, some, they responded differently. So we, to the best of our ability, we tried to have them allow you to compare apples to apples as much as possible. Of course, it's not always.
Right.
Possible.
Can you give us any qualitative guidance other than what you, we see on the summary, which was very well prepared?
I don't know if you're about qualitative guidance.
I think that was where David was going with, do you have a recommendation?
Yeah, I mean, I would just say if we, there is only one firm here that we, that we have worked with, with our zoning by law, and that's Dillis and Roy.
I noticed in Dillis and Roy's proposal, they had estimated about three to four weeks to complete the initial review. I may have missed that. Did GCG indicate what their timing was?
They did not.
I mean, they do break down the number of hours that they spend, but at the same time, I don't know what their bandwidth is. That could be number of hours spent every month.
Do you provide them the database for the stormwater calculation?
Yeah.
They just have to.
I introduce them to my engineer, I have those guys play in the sandbox. And hopefully, they come out with just a couple of questions that, for anybody that has questions, they can resolve it. So now they have full access to everything.
So they're not creating anything, they're just analyzing what they've got.
Everything that is submitted.
So I'm from mine. I've worked with Dillis and Roy in the same capacity. They're doing peer review for a project in hard work for me right now that they just finished. So I found a professional, reasonable, and their proposal I thought was okay. Their traffic analysis, the other components is what, to me, was very high. You know, to analyze the traffic report, they want seventy-five hundred dollars. I mean, it's, you know, it's not that complicated. I'm not a traffic engineer, but that, that seems like a really, really high number.
But there's a lot of information in that report that's divided.
There is, but the bulk of the information is the traffic data. That's just, you know, empirical data of what it is, understanding the area and the recommendations. So again, you know, they're not asked to design it, they're just asked to review it. I think in the GNC, who I haven't worked with, I don't know anything about, you know, they had like twelve hundred dollars for this traffic review, which, you know, an engineer spending a day and change to review it, make sure it's reasonable and appropriate, that, that seems reasonable. I don't know how else you spend, I don't know how much more time you spend on it. So, you know, if the town is comfortable with Dillis and Roy and you would chat with them about the traffic study and see if there's something else that could be done. If there's a kind of, I don't, I'm not against the other company either, but if you've worked with Dillis and Roy and you have a comfort level with them, if we can work to find a more reasonable alternative for the, for traffic, since it's a supplemental one, the traffic study is a little bit further down. So if we gave them, if you were comfortable to hire them for the drainage, which is a lot more intensive dealing with drainage, you know, with all those counts, everything. If the board was inclined to give them that work and we hold off on the traffic, I'd be okay with that, if that's the company you want, if you want to use the other company and find another two. But.
Yeah, that's definitely something that the board could think about is, as we're saying, you know, choose, choose a firm for civil work. And then maybe by the time that we have our next public hearing, we can come up with a couple of other traffic reviews. We could even reach back out to GCG and the other, just to see if, what the, and Wright Pierce, what the traffic component separately might be. And just get a few other quotes as well, so you can balance it.
That, that would, that just, that just seems like an unfair number to me, that's all.
I mean, the other thing to note too with Dillis and Roy is that their total estimate here was just a hair under eleven. Also includes, you know, attendance for six hours, meetings. And, I mean, it's possible that, you know, but I've also seen peer reviews where you get the report and you can read it and it's self-explanatory and you work through it and, you know, or you only need about an hour or so. So their estimate actually might even be a hair higher.
It could be better. And like I said, they, I just, they were very matter-of-fact, very professional. And, you know, this is what, this is what was designed. And because we're just finishing with them, they're out doing the as-built and evaluating the completed project now, which presumably you'd use them for that here as well, to make sure that what we said we did, we actually did. So they did the initial peer review and followed it through on the as-builds, which is, I think, a benefit. And they're relatively local, which I think is, is good too. So from that sense, like I said, the traffic is what, I don't, I just don't think it's fair.
MDM was.
Do a traffic study, you stand, you count around.
Seventy-five hundred and.
That's all the, yeah, so the numbers are there.
Bayside is seventy, well, seventy-eight fifty, that's what public, that's what meetings and everything.
It's only a couple of bucks.
About fifteen hundred dollars.
Yeah, but still substantial, yeah.
Without making a final decision, I do think there is something to consider when you have a company that can do both, you know, GCG can do both the peer review and the traffic study combined.
Yeah.
That is something to consider, rather than having to sublet it out. I mean, Dillis and Roy, we know them, they're, you know, they're very qualified and capable. But like I say, if you have to sublet something out, I don't know, that's, it's something to think about.
No, I think that's a, that's a fair point. There's an efficiency and expediency to that. I think, that being said, I am overwhelmed by the fact that why would you give a proposal and not actually say when you could do it?
That was my biggest concern. Thank you for voicing that because I think we do need to make sure that we can work within the timelines.
Right. I mean, that's one concern that I had is, I mean, in a typical manner, I could imagine, we go back to GCG, we try to get some more information. Unfortunately, by this point, the process is kind of moving along. And there is a timeline here by which we need the peer review in order to do everything else. I mean, under other circumstances, you know, but, you know, but your point is well taken, I think. Any other thoughts, comments, questions from your staff or members of the board?
For the review of the engineering for the stormwater and streets and everything, I like Dillis and Roy. I've worked with them in the past many times on the planning board and also the CBA. And they've always come through, they've always been very professional. And I have a certain amount of trust. I know what they've done.
Yeah. Sure. Okay.
Can I make an action recommendation then? Would it be possible for the board to make a recommendation subject in and request that Dillis and Roy, that they revisit their traffic recommendations?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm, Michael, I'm kind of looking at you guys in terms of what you need from us tonight in order to move forward. But at the same time, go on with the spirit of where this conversation is going.
I say selecting a firm would probably be the best choice right now. If you do go with Dillis and Roy, I can solicit other estimates from other firms to see if anything comes in lower.
For the traffic.
For the traffic component.
And technically, Dillis and Roy were the ones who resessed these guys for traffic. It's not like you went out and just said, I just need a traffic quote.
To Dillis and Roy?
No, to anybody.
I did just traffic quotes for the two that they were recommended.
Oh, I see, okay.
So they knew it was part of a larger project.
I don't think you should put a lot of effort into a traffic study. You read through, it's pretty obvious what they've done. It's pretty simple to review. I even, some projects, I kind of wonder why they have a traffic study at all, because it doesn't really contribute much to the project.
This one, I think we want to review because it is a road that's, well, it's small, it's well-traveled, and people do have some concerns about what's one-way and two-way.
It induces a lot of traffic.
Yeah. I think we should need someone to review it, but I don't think it costs seven thousand dollars to do it.
Thank you.
Alright.
Particularly since it's my seven thousand. Denise was going to give us a bad time. I dressed up and everything. You think I'm going to keep buying jackets?
It's easy to spend that money when it's not yours.
The concern is, you know, what are we going to, when and who are we going to get for a traffic study? If we, you know, make the decision based on not having a traffic study.
Well, I don't think it's that, it's, I don't think the consideration is not having a traffic study. I think the, for lack of a better term.
Well, not, we don't have a right, we don't have something reasonable right now.
Right, right. And the preliminary proposal is essentially to, if I'm reading the room correctly, the preliminary proposal is to engage Dillis and Roy with the idea of then seeking a traffic study quote. Either they find somebody else, we contact somebody else, and if we need to, you know, we can talk, we're going to talk about this right next. We need to rejigger the schedule to allow for, you know, the discussion of traffic to maybe be slightly later in order to give us time to do so. I mean, that might be the compromise. But this will, at least in my opinion, this will allow Dillis and Roy to kick off the process to engage in the peer review on the other topics, the drainage, you know, stormwater.
You have a significant component that could get started in the traffic report. Not that it's not important, but it's a little less important per se, and you can wait for it.
The site design and the drainage and stuff is also relevant in relation to working conservation and having that technical review where the traffic, it is, I agree, if people have questions, I want to make sure people are comfortable with it. But that is kind of in and of itself outside of the rest of the work. The most of the concern, the concerns are really offside as compared to onside, so.
Is it fair to expect to have the new quotes in the next meeting? You know, so we're not, it's not dragging on beyond that. We can, we can help them make this in the next meeting.
Yes.
On traffic.
Yeah, that's pretty simple. And one, and one thing to note again, so Dillis and Roy's, you assume they max out. They're at ten thousand nine twenty, GCG is at fourteen, fourteen three. So you're looking at about, like, if you were to add traffic there to even it, it's thirty-three hundred dollars, which actually is double what GCG is saying and like half what these other guys. So there is, you know, we could actually.
It seems appropriate.
In orders of magnitude, it's in the ballpark.
That's right, that's right. And frankly, if, you know, there's a little flexibility, probably.
Right.
And I'll entertain a motion. I assume I need a motion. I'll entertain a motion then.
So I'll make a motion that we accept the Dillis and Roy proposals to proceed with that. Second.
The motion with a second, any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye. And I see a roof raising, right? Alright, that motion passes. We can work through it and see if it's signed afterwards. Alright, and then I guess the instruction to you all is, find some traffic people. Okay, yes?
Different terms of this, differently, but technically, you need to ask the developer to contribute that. Different kinds of this differently, but technically you need to ask the developer to contribute that for the peer review. Is that right?
Yes, um so we'll, we will be in touch about the um the total for for Dilson Roy, plus I think it's a ten percent markup as well. So yes, exactly, so we'll want to get the the peer review account set up so that we can get going with the supplemental view.
And and it's, I think, probably was kind of worth, just just so the expectations are clear, that's, I assume, eight. This is not known as a sort of not to exceed, this is what we think going in this is gonna cost. If issues come up and you need more peer review, we'll ask for more.
Yes.
And plus the traffic reviews.
Correct.
Were the other parts of peer review are gonna ask for, or that pretty much covered everything?
I think that pretty much covered anything.
There was one just placeholder, I, we haven't discussed all this stuff yet, but I noticed, you know, that somewhere down the road, there's all this stuff around. You know, thinking about the designs of the buildings, and we don't get into that a whole lot in 40B. But there was a point, I think you made about, well, we do want to provide some flexibility for how these to change in the future. Those discussions in theory might benefit from some kind of small amount of architectural peer review. I don't think it's worth talking about right now, other than just sort of mentioning it, because I know applicants like to know, like, what's the total bill they might be thinking of, right? So um just to throw that out there now, I I want.
So you's alluding to some contingency funding that might come up later?
Or you're sort of possibly, you know, we get two, three meetings in, and we're starting to think about that, and we kind of get an understanding of, you know, are we gonna see all the designs and they're set in stone, or are we kind of coming up with guidelines? And.
So this isn't the total amount of money we're gonna spend, be prepared to maybe.
Does that, does that make sense?
I think that's what he's asking for, right?
Or even just, I'm letting you know that it's in the room now.
Right.
So he can't say, what, I already wrote one check, I thought we were done, right?
You could say it.
I already said it. And I know, I assume you you've checked with all your town, this has gone to town officials, other town boards. You should also let them know if they feel they need to benefit from peer review, that's something you could queue up. I'm saying, sorry.
I know, no, thank you.
I asked Kathy, does she need any input for peer review for what, for the uh wetlands?
Not other than what you would be getting on stormwater.
Okay.
No, not something separate.
We doubled their footprint.
And we typically do that with the planning board on projects, their peer reviewers.
Just out, that's all. So the last item that I wanted to touch upon was the schedule, uh moving forward. And so um I talked to town staff about sort of different topics that we might be able to sort of devote certain meetings towards. And so tentatively, um the topics that we were thinking of, well, one would be water and wastewater. Um the second would be stormwater management. The third would be, for lack of a better term, mobility, uh which would be, you know, largely traffic, but to the extent that we need to talk about also the trails. Another one involving the sort of the governance, the ownership structure that we had talked about. But also probably piggybacking on, you know, what additional, you know, benefits to the town, mitigation of any effects that need to be done, might be able to pack into those sort of two together. And then, you know, sort of a wrap-up, final meeting miscellaneous, what did we miss? Did certain topics go to roll over as well, which sort of turns out to be one, two, three, four, five different uh meetings. If you go one a month, that um actually takes us to June, though there is a question as to whether we should have a a meeting before the peer reviewer come in at three to four weeks. That means that a February meeting may not be necessary, you know, in this. So um and just as a reminder, based on the current schedule, um we'd have to close the public hearing by July twenty-four. So those are sort of some of the broad topics that we were thinking about, I'll open it for discussion. Open for discussion.
So is the notion that each meeting would be dedicated to that particular subject matter? So do we think a two-hour window is sufficient for some of those, or we need to accommodate any timing?
Right, so um I think that the proposed dates, that at least you were throwing out there, are what would normally be pre-scheduled CDA dates.
Correct.
You know, so they, so unlike today, which was sort of a special dedicated meeting.
Right.
That, this would be placed on sort of the the normal agenda um going forward. So it's, you know, there may not be two hours, you know, with this.
Correct.
And and depending on what other future applications we get, you know, suddenly there's a night where we're going, oh shoot, we get four special permits. You know, we might have to make some adjustments.
Right, shouldn't we be asking Mark about uh what his schedule is for producing?
He'll, he'll be available whenever we want, I'm joking, I'm sorry.
No, I I I guess I appreciate it, but I think it's uh having the schedule that Michael put together is wonderful.
You can run with that one?
Yeah, I can, I can plan when I need to be here, I can talk with my consultants that are focused on that, if they need to be here to to provide, you know, more information and answer questions, so um I I thought it was terrific. Really, really helpful from my end, so I I I'm sure I can accommodate all of that stuff. Yeah, that's very helpful.
So the only thing that always that is any applications that come in, if we're gonna use a standard meeting cadence, then we're gonna have to have some flexibility in a way we can manage that.
No, no, I I think that's exactly right. I mean, my, the way I was thinking about it is that if we can plan it out now.
Yeah, pick a day.
Yeah, then then if we need to make adjustments, we can do so on the fly. It also might be that, you know, on a particular meeting, you know, pick one of these topics, suddenly, you know, we're going two, three, four, you know, not giving you enough four hours, you know, but we suddenly realize, like, we're gonna need more time later. So if we need to schedule interim meetings, then we can certainly do so.
Yeah, I think some things will come up at the other meetings too, that we'll be able to deal with, but I I think, I think having the target concept with the scale of the project, for the benefit of the residents, of being able to focus in on any particular interest they may have is, is true.
So before focusing on the dates, so um those sort of general topics, does that work for people? Are there other ones that, you know, and by the way, this doesn't have to be set in stone, I just want to be clear about that, this is really meant to be a way of planning, then we can be flexible. Are there any other sort of major topics that you feel like may have been missed?
Where would infrastructure fit in, you know, in terms of?
Water and.
Water, storm, traffic. Well, then more more the the lighting, the the uh, you know, the 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 um special energy codes. Those those things that, you know, are are an issue, but we probably will need to get those answered as well.
Yeah.
Right, so you just screen it and have it come?
That's the reason I'm asking for it.
Particularly with some of the other utilities, right?
Yeah, so if there's not a waiver for specialized energy code, then it might not be worth talking because it's assumed that they would have to comply without coming back for a modification.
So I I I heard what you said, but he also alluded to the fact, there's a gas line running down the street.
Yes.
Right, and if he chooses to adopt that, that could be a whole different conversation.
Yes, so.
Doesn't matter, whatever I do, it's still gonna be in compliance with the code, so.
It's gonna be an implication to what it's gonna cost you to bill.
Yeah, but that, I mean, that it's a, that's a balancing act for me, I don't, I don't look at it. I I don't look at it as a a special financial consideration, I might choose that over o- over using uh electric, so.
Pretty soon though.
What's that?
You're gonna be producing drawings and.
Yeah, I mean, we have drawings, but the gas, you know, the gas companies, they're not gonna do anything until, you know, this is approved and and it's still gonna take me.
So the only implication I'm raising is, this cost involved, if you choose to adopt a gas as a solution.
Sure.
There's cost implications to you, that's all.
Yeah, did you see there? Yeah, I agree with that. And I I think, um just to go along with with your this question and this, and deals with some of the other stuff. For me, for a a process, dealing with, you know, the the drainage, the, you know, the the physical design aspects of the site, the hard kind of design aspects of the site upfront, make sure they're comfortable with the roadways, the layouts, the design, all that stuff. If there's a consensus that this meets the standards that we need to, and there's a consensus that the board is comfortable with that. After that, then, you know, until that happens, you know, talking any specifics about lighting or, you know, some of the more softer aesthetic issues could be kind of wasted time, so for me, the peer review for the infrastructure and, you know, uh drainage design, roadway, all that stuff, that's the that's the most important, and then the other, other aspects flow off of that, that could be further down the road. So if we say, all right, you're comfortable, you, this, you're comfortable with this layout, this meets the standards, everyone's happy with that. Then, i- if you want more design plans, and I know that that we've got a fix, it's a hell of a lot easier to do that instead of doing it and then changing it and doing it and changing it, that's why.
And I agree with you a hundred percent on that, I just, I just wanted to understand whether it's something we ought to cover. And, you know, where it would fit into the next.
So what we could do is, um so one of the things that we had sort of discussed was, let's just skip over February for right now. Largely because we'll not have any sort of peer review by that point anyways. But if you start in March, you know, you could do water, wastewater, and these sorts of utility sort of issues, package those together right then. You know, if you think that that might work. MT books, I don't know if that's.
Yeah, well, as long as we, we don't know what other applications might be.
Understood, yeah.
So from a planning perspective, you know, do it, right?
So the, I'm gonna look over your notes as easily.
You have drawings in and everything to uh for wastewater and wells?
We've got the preliminary, the preliminary work, but then it's been reviewed by DEP, and so, you know, um in the first step with a quick thing, and everyone wants to get going, uh with the wells, the first thing you go through is a citing approval process, uh which takes some time, that's been done. We're ready to drill the wells, mother nature didn't let us, so we still have to drill the wells. Once the wells are drilled, then you do uh yeah extensive pump tests and uh, you know, then that design happens. You know, from a practical sense, that is all under DEP, you really have no control over it one way or the other. So beyond understanding what happening, what, beyond understanding to your comfort level of how it's being addressed, you you don't have, I don't want to say you don't have any input on it, because that sounds harsher than what I mean, but from a a practical sense, it it isn't anything that you're involved with. So my objective, if I brought my consultant in, was to make sure that you guys understood what what's gonna happen, how it works, how it's controlled long-term. But the physical design of it, I can't put that in M4. And I, you know, and so beyond that, I don't think it's gonna, I don't think it's a whole bunch of time on on the board's behalf beyond having a clear understanding of the parameters. I know, you know, residents question about, you know, uh the the draw of the water and what's that cone and how's it impacted, and, you know, they can talk about that from a technical sense to give you comfort. You know, but we're, you know, we're way away from the zone one to the zone two for any resident, so um you know, and these are gonna be artisan wells, five hundred feet down, so it's it's almost, you know, really pretty much unrelated. But they, people, it's a natural thing to have anxiety about it, so happy to have my guy come in, run through all that stuff, give you the data. But beyond that, it's really in the state's hand, not even in the, not not your hands, not in the board of health's hands. So that's all I look at it that as, is, you know, in a half an hour, forty-five minutes, he can give you, uh he talks a lot, whether me. Maybe an hour, we can, we can have him explain everything, uh so that you can have a good comfort level on it.
It's more for the residents, though, they, they're the ones.
And for the residents, yeah.
Their, their wells and their set through system.
Completely understand, yeah.
Yeah. So Pedro, I think you want to say something?
Yeah, just the other key piece in in, you know, this is a a great schedule to lay out. The other key thing that will make it really work is us working with the peer reviewer and your engineers ahead of time. Because you don't wanna, like, this isn't the forum where they debate stuff. This is the forum where they come in and they show you how they figured it all out. And then you ask questions to make sure you're comfortable with that, and residents are, well, but, but, you know, ideally, the peer reviewer will say, we met, you know, a month ago, I looked over stuff, I had seven questions, he answered the first six right off the bat. The last one we had to work through, we made these three changes. It's like now you've gone from problems to solutions to just essentially like a clean bill of health. And then what's great about it is you make the changes right in the plan, and then we're not even having a list of additions, because the file of additions the plan, you know, it's all in there now. So, you know, if we can queue that up ahead, these will move quickly. The only other ones I want to throw out was, um I I'm assuming mobility, traffic includes both reviewing their traffic study about what's leaving the site and how it's safe, and also internal circulation.
Yes.
Fire department access, all that stuff.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Anyone who's moving in, out, within, among.
Right, parking on the site, all that stuff.
And UPS, all those other guys.
Yeah, and you you might want to put a placeholder in there for some of these last issues you mentioned about landscaping, framing, designing, just.
Right, yeah, that's what I thought maybe.
Yeah, some of the softer aesthetic stuff, yeah, down the road, but yeah, towards the end, once we know everything.
So, so lighting also. So here here's basically, so the idea would be, uh, March fourth, water, wastewater, and other utilities. April eighth, stormwater management, May sixth is mobility, basically, anyone who's moving in, out.
And traffic for the.
Traffic, yes, yes, traffic, yes, exactly. Uh June third, working on the um ownage, ownership of the structure, um a little bit of portability, and then sort of the integration also with the town land.
You might include phasing in there?
Phasing in terms.
In terms of, you know, what, what are the buildings?
Oh, oh, yes.
What gets released and what gets built.
Yeah, um and then um July eighth would be essentially a a wrap-up meeting. I I don't want to necessarily use that term, but for any topics that we haven't been able to get to, anything that's left over, and frankly, any of the sort of softer topics that, you know, maybe don't deserve its full meaning to be there. That would put us on schedule for when the public hearing should close, July twenty-fourth. And, you know, and obviously we need to schedule special meetings in the interim, if we can.
Yeah, we'll do it, yeah.
I'll get to February in just a second, but based on that breakdown, at least as of now, are we okay with that?
Yeah.
It seems to work.
Sounds fine, and if we have to introduce this support of the meeting in some place along the way, we'll do it.
Okay, all right.
And we we're, we have a commitment to meet a date, right?
Right.
Quick question, in that schedule, where would you include a discussion of wetlands issues? Is it with stormwater?
That's what I would be thinking, and and I know that there was a request for ConCom, so I'm thinking that could be all April eighth. Um that might be a nice way to sort of patch that all together, that works?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so let's go ahead and do that, and then on, um I guess I'm gonna ask you directly, what's your thought about the fifth, about February fifth?
Uh so February fifth can be a generalized 40B overview with Ezra. I mean, more targeted towards the public since um 40B is quite complicated and can be hard for some people to understand. Um it would not be a continuation of this public hearing, it would be separate from this, so that the public can learn a little bit more about 40B. Um it's an option for that. If the board is interested in having something like that, um February fifth would be probably the time to have it. If not, uh February fifth can remain as a regular scheduled CDA.
Should we have any applications?
There are two applications scheduled for um February fifth. Uh one is the continuation of the golf course hearing, and one is for a shed in a residential property. Which, so those are the two that we have on the schedule. I think.
We also have committed start times for the, at least one, Mary.
Yes, both have start times, so if we did do a 40B info session, it might not start until eight o'clock.
Okay.
Thoughts, comments, concerns?
I know, I can't make that February fifth.
Thanks for letting us know, appreciate it.
Yeah, it hurts. By the way, just, I think for approval of the comprehensive permit, it's just a simple majority, is that correct? It's not like a special permit, really, a super majority, just a a simple majority. So three of the five have to.
Michael, will you send us the schedule out, is this, so we've got it all? Thank you so much.
So I was just gonna start right.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I'll send it out to you, Ruth, and I'm also gonna post it on the town's website, um under the Stowe Acres info page, so.
So how much time do we think you want to allot for Ezra to do a presentation at the level that we think is appropriate?
Are you thinking a presentation or just more of a Q and A? Sorry, I just, I want to.
Yeah, okay, whatever, quote presentation.
From what I saw tonight.
From what I saw tonight, at least the board seems to understand the stuff better than most boards.
Okay.
Um, which is nice to see. That doesn't mean I'm, you know, I'm I'm more than have to come out, go through the whole Dog and Funny Show or just do a Q and A. Um, or, you know, whatever works.
Yeah.
You know, yeah, I mean, I I I don't want to add more meetings to your schedule, but I don't want to.
We're we're here that night anyways.
And we don't like going home before ten.
Right.
All right, why don't we slot it for eight o'clock? Um, my suggestion would be, let's split the baby and we do a mini version of the presentation.
Yeah, twenty minute presentation.
Yeah, then open for Q and A. Okay, so that's.
That's it.
Okay. Yep, all right. Great, and I think that's all I've got on my list, so I believe we have a.
Um, one other thing.
Yes.
Um. We don't need to go over this extensively now, but is there any additional information that you would like the applicant to provide or to start preparing for future hearings? Um, I think.
Details of the street, I I gave, and my list has a few things that he needs to address, so I mean, whatever form or order he wants to address, it's not fine.
Um, yes, I.
Yeah, and I I I haven't looked at it, but I will.
Yeah.
I'd like a stance on the, from the entire board as to what to provide. So if Ernie's list is what you want to do, I would like.
You haven't looked at my list, so.
Well, I would like just.
There's just mainly questions about, I like more detail about like streets. And charging and possibly, you brought up garages for the apartments. I like that idea because. It is, they they EVs cause a problem, you need a charging place and if you have an apartment, how are you going to charge your car? You're not going to put a type two out in the uh middle of the street so you can plug in your car, so you need some more physical structure for them to do it. It could be just a shed. And it's irresponsible how secure it is, but something needs to be provided because there's more and more people, I have a lucky car, I've got in my garage, plug it in.
So I, um.
And there's also the power distribution for the whole system, that's.
All of that.
Big drain.
Yeah.
That's a big deal.
So, I mean, if if there's, I mean, I will review, um, Ernie's list, if there's other stuff. I mean, the fifth is going to be focused on really program things. If people want to review everything that we've talked about tonight and have stuff for the fifth, then I can have it for, I can have it for, uh. Uh, I could have it for the following meeting, if there's items in addition to what, uh, Ernie has requested, so if I don't get it tonight, I'm not super worried about it.
Yeah.
Everything's a slab, right? No foundations.
No.
Obviously, only for the cottages or slabs, the houses will be foundations.
Full foundations, okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, one sec.
So, so I kind of missed that, so Ernie's list is the position of the board for additional information.
For right now.
For now, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately it'd be nice to see more of the, uh, what the designs for the, call it so the, um, you know, the, so, you know, his older building, just a, just. So we know what it's going to work much.
So the future, you know, on the governance issue, which I know is down the road, you know, the documents, the H O A documents and.
Yeah. Maria, sorry.
I'd like a sense of of kind of how much, oh gosh, that echoes terribly.
Ruth, sorry, one second. Maria, go ahead.
I just wanted to, uh, I just wanted to clarify, so do we have access to that list?
Oh, you got it.
Yeah.
It's in the correspond, yeah, it's in the correspondence. No, no worries.
I put my positions on the various documents that we may subscribe with or ask for waivers. And also just topics that need to be addressed.
All right, Ruth, sorry, I didn't need to cut you off there, go ahead.
No, not at all, sorry for the, I don't, I I can't be polite because I can't see who's trying to talk.
Oh, I, it's, I've been there, I know.
Um, just thinking ahead and you alluded to it earlier, to the extent of which, um, and this again is further down the pike. To the extent at which we need to contemplate architectural review and governance documents for this, for the homeowners, the single family homes. Just understanding how you're conceiving of that would be helpful.
Sure.
One other thing, scheduling wise, I received, um. The applicant has requested to have, uh, pairs or individual site visits for the members, so having one larger site visit. Um, I think we can schedule those accordingly. Um, I believe the Conservation Commission is doing a site walk of the North Course.
So. We're doing, uh, we, so we do monthly trail walks, but that's going to more be on the town land on, I think it's March twenty second.
Okay.
People are welcome.
So if people want to see the golf course or to see the property, they can see it probably during a a community walk that the Conservation Commission is doing.
But in terms of our site visits, um. Is there, i- is there a uh preference in terms of of um, of time period? Um, I mean, I'd be more inclined to go earlier rather than late, but I also understand that, you know, we are in a winter.
Yeah, my my com- my comment, uh, Ruth, Michael had had brought it up, my comment of doing smaller groups was only then, you know, the A. You don't have much on the ground, you get a golf product, you can really get a good look at it if we, if it's a public hearing and you have everybody. No one's, you're really not going to get everybody en masse to be able to.
Yeah.
To spend time. If we went out with, what, two at a time, it's not a quorum, I'm happy to take the time, it's, you know, based on your schedules. And you can really get a good feel of that place, which I I think it's important to, there's a lot of land out there and it it's, I think it would be helpful to 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 get a a good tour. Uh, and it's a hell of a long walk if you're just going to, it's it's a long way, you know. Um, so, you know, particularly this time of year, I think, you know, we 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 get a lot of stragglers, so, um, I can work with the course, we can pick days that are decent. Um, I live locally, my office is local, so even if, you know, we know we got a good week coming up, we can work with Mike and say, hey, Wednesday might be a good day, who can make it? And even if we did two at nine and two at eleven, whatever works.
Yeah, I can.
Work with everyone who's following.
Yeah, I think my suggestion is is to work with Valerie and Michael and, you know, to the extent that you can say, all right, preliminarily, here's five dates and time periods and then they can contact us and we can just sort of sign up. Um, you know, if if it's one of those where you can look at the weather and not realize it's that freakishly February week where it's in the fifties, you know, all about it. Um, so, um, I mean, I think personally, I think the goal should be that everyone completes a site visit before the March meeting. Um, you know, weather notwithstanding, um, but I think that would be a good goal because by that point, when we show up at the March meeting, we'll have all conducted a site visit. Peer reviews will have come in, then I think we can sort of hit the ground running. That's that's my, that's my goal.
Very good.
Excellent.
Yeah, I think it's not just the continuation.
Uh, yes. Um, I got a sign? Yes, you did.
So. First line is the date of the continuation and that'll be March fifth, I believe we decided.
Uh, we may work. That's not, that's not going to be here, that's just more of an education about forty B generically, so.
So, but, uh, uh, not that line, not that one?
Oh, until, okay, this one here? Oh, hearing two, oh, all right, you know, the next time. March.
The March fourth, Stowe Farms, as a project, was it, is that Brooklyn?
Uh, yeah.
There's like an extension.
There are four more houses right next to the, uh, back to March.
Oh, 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 oh.
I think that's.
Yes, okay, okay.
I think that's.
Yeah, I don't think. Wouldn't notice, no, I've been living here, that, no, 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 that place is not that old, you've been here, that that place, Deerfield, you've been here for over two years.
Key rate at.
We're not talking about.
Yes, we have another trip.
So I don't know where, I don't.
In the future, if I remember, we don't mention that.
All right.
All right, so teams, we get control of this meeting again?
I move that we continue this hearing to March the fifth or fourth at seven thirty.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any discussion? None? All in favor?
Is it seven thirty or seven?
Seven thirty.
There's already a couple of hearings.
Okay. And if you can just sign the consideration sheet.
Okay.
All right, who's, where? We have to sign it.
Look, do I?
I do the clerk.
As a clerk.
Yeah, oh, as a clerk, yeah.
You want to sign it?
No, no, I don't want to sign it. And with that.
I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Okay.
At, uh, nine forty one.
Uh, your motion, second from Andy.
If you go over nine, we get paid.
That's right.
Yeah. All right, put it on the peer review list.
Any discussions here, none, all in favor? Motion passes, media turn.
My R C under forty one minutes late.